All this meeting to order and we're stand for the Pledge of Religion.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Washington, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, really serious.
The next regular meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, February 23 at 6:00 p.m. at the Community Center, 3500 Edgewater Drive, Seabrook, Florida. Please silence or turn off your cell phones. Consent agenda, minutes of the board supervisor's regular meeting held Friday, January 22, 2021, Treasuries report and golf financials, December 31, 2020. Can I have a motion?
Move to accept.
Second.
Any comment from the board?
Yeah, I had a question for Ariel. Is she going to be here?
No, sir.
Well, for next meeting, I was looking at the Treasuries report and it appears that the membership in the recreational areas are no better than last year and we took a 50% increase. So I'd like to have some numbers on where we are and what she thinks is the problem or if she's good about the numbers because it appears we're going to miss budget by quite a bit. So if we could have that for the next meeting, that would be great.
Yes, sir.
Any public comment? Okay, Chrissy?
Supervisor Hotteling?
Yes.
Supervisor Brooks?
Yes.
Supervisor Harret?
Yes.
President Gilpin?
Yes, sir. Action agenda, resolution number 2021-02-05-02, a resolution of the Sun on Lake of Saving Improvement District to reject all bids from RFP 2007. Can I have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Any comment?
Yes, I just wanted to clarify the point in, where are we here? The last whereas where it says that we've determined it's in our best interest to reject all bids and negotiate the existing contract with the current management company. I agree with that, but I'd like just some clarification. My belief is that we're going to see how the quarterly meetings work out before we negotiate the new contract.
I'm sorry, where are you? I just got it.
The last whereas where we're
Where is that, Eric?
Whereas we're rejecting all of the bids, which would include their bid, and then we're going to negotiate the existing contract with the current management group. I just think we need to have a trial period to see. So we're going to continue the existing contract. Based on our discussions, we're going to start having quarterly workshops with Indigo and then at some point we need to negotiate a new contract with them. But I don't think we need to jump into that. I think we need to make sure how things are working under the new understanding before we negotiate the new contract.
I would think we should be able to take everything with the and off because we're just going back to the way things were. We still had the six months or just we're not changing anything. We're just rejecting the bids as they came in.
I'm okay with that as well.
But are we talking about quarterly meetings? Are quarterly meetings currently a requirement under the existing contract?
There are no requirements, but there is an understanding that Indigo has brought to us that they want to have quarterly workshops so that we can be better in tune with each other. So I think that's an understanding that doesn't need to be in a contract right now. And I just think we proceed forward and not negotiate a new contract immediately, but make sure how the arrangements are going under the new understanding. So I'm okay either way, whether leaving it in with the understanding that we're not going to immediately negotiate a new agreement or taking it out completely as Commissioner Harret recommended.
Well, so we're just going to take out the negotiate the existing contract with the current management company?
Yeah, that's fine.
That's what I would like to see.
That's fine.
We need to have, so for amending the resolution, we need to have a motion to amend. That is going to go on and then you're going to hold the resolution.
Okay, motion to amends are set.
Seconded.
Our motion is seconded. And for the board's standing on that issue.
Okay, so it's my understanding, we're going to have, give them about six months is what we said. If we're happy at that point in time, we will sit down with them and talk contract.
Yep.
You don't have to have their okay.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, I'm going to ask for public comment.
Tony Chansey, Senior VP, Indigo Golf Partners. Thank you. I appreciate that as, you know, the degree and what you guys are talking about is from an amendment standpoint is fine with us. Obviously, we want to do the quarterly workshops, the sooner the better, as far as we're concerned. That was all about trying to improve our communication, which we, I think all parties agree would be nothing but a positive. So the sooner we can do that, the better and we're fine with, you know, reviewing us after six months and so forth. Hopefully that'll go, you'll be reviewing us as we go through the next six months.
Exactly. We will.
I got very few of that. It's not quite as simple as Supervisor Brooks said.
Yeah, exactly.
So you're the ones that give us the numbers and now I'm going to let you do your job.
Okay.
And I would say set up a quarterly meeting as soon as you can.
Absolutely. Yeah, we'll get that arranged with you guys and so forth and we look forward to that.
Okay.
So thank you.
Okay. Okay, any public comment? Chrissy?
Supervisor Harret?
Yes.
Just to clarify, we're voting on the amendment now, correct?
Yes, sir.
Supervisor Hotteling?
Yes.
Supervisor Brooks?
Yes.
President Gilpin?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we're striking that language and negotiate the existing contract with the current management company. So now we're going to vote on the resolution as an amendment.
Any other comment by the board?
No.
Any public comment? Chris?
Supervisor Brooks?
Yes.
Supervisor Harret?
Yes, with the understanding, I hope I don't regret this.
Supervisor Hotteling?
Yes.
President Gilpin?
Yes, sir.
I do have a question on this. Have we, when will we be sending out letters to all companies acknowledging what we've done?
I'll be sending out an email next week.
I don't think, I would like to see us send out an actual letter to the people who made the presentations, not an email. I think it's a little bit more professional. I don't know. You guys okay with that?
I don't care.
I concur with that.
Yeah.
I would concur with a letter.
I don't think it makes a difference.
Yes, a letter.
Okay. I'll take your answer too, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to amend this just a little bit and let people from Indigo talk because this is, they're here. And I just think we should let them give us an update and then I'll go on to the next resolution. Okay?
Good morning. Brian Rhodes, Indigo Golf, Regional Director of Operations. Just going to go over some completed items that we did over the last two weeks, just to give you an update that we are on pace to where we said we were going to be during our presentation two weeks ago. So the annual summary was distributed to the board. So you have all the numbers by month and by pro forma for the next five years. The public menu was distributed to the board. Mike said he didn't get any comments back. I didn't receive anything. So we did go into effect on that on Monday. And Tuesday we went into effect with the new menu. The initial, you know, first couple of days here, we've had very good reviews and people are happy with both the pricing and the product. So we're in good shape there. Obviously, it's too early for me to tell you where we stand financially. I mean, we're running the numbers every day, so we're tracking it, but, you know, the first couple of days that we had were a little cold. We didn't have as much member or even golfer traffic as we do normally. So they were a little lower than our averages in January. But yesterday was a good night and I haven't seen the numbers yet for that, but Mike informed me it was very good. We've instituted a new daily lineup sheet, so the staff is being prepped before each meal with the specials, making sure that the uniforms are signed off on and if the chef has to any information along with the training topic of the day. The signature service training manual has been given to the staff and the managers are learning it right now and will soon be passing along to the rest of the staff. We established some weekly sales forecast to make sure then we can come back and do budgets. We've established weekly percentages for both front of the house, back of the house and beverage cart. So if we hit for our schedule, we're scheduling to those purposes and, you know, what we're expecting in revenues. Obviously, if we're not going to hit the revenues, we're going to, we'll start sending home the staff and we'll make the adjustment for the next week. So the staffing model is in effect. We've did the changes we were talking about, I believe, you know, some of them go hourly starting tomorrow. And we've established weekly meetings for both progress, F and B training and marketing. It's been a busy two weeks. I know that Mike's been there and we've been, I don't know if there's been a day we haven't been in contact with each other. So we'll continue it and we're looking forward to making it what we said we were going to do. That's all I have. Got a question?
Any questions for?
Yeah, I got a question. We, I don't know, Mike maybe knows better. Have we, are we putting anything in our newsletter, you know, the monthly bill thing that goes out about what we're doing here with the restaurant?
Yeah, just for clarification, our, the golf club's monthly newsletter, yes, that there is information in there and I believe you're speaking to the district's newsletter?
Yeah.
The mailer?
Yeah.
Yeah, we had this discussion, yes, we will. We will be sending stuff out with that. So I got it on my agenda to work with the district staff to get our stuff accompanied in there.
I mean, I think you should come up a way to stick the menu into that, into that mailing piece and then have a little blurb.
Yes.
So it hits more than just the golf membership.
Right, and we're going to do that along with kind of jumping on their email list as well. So that is in the plan, yes.
And some heavy social marketing. We're going to do some lookalike audiences and, you know, try to reach in a 15 mile radius of here.
Okay, also, I'll give you, I'll give you a data boy. I was in a, I was at the clubhouse, who were at the clubhouse, Tuesday, Mike?
Tuesday.
Tuesday.
That when I saw you guys, Tuesday. And the COO of Trune walked in with a couple of other guys, but I mean Bruce came in and he was just making a general visit. He didn't know I was there. I didn't know he was going to be there. But it was nice to see, you know, that he was following up, so to speak, on the commitment that he had made a couple of weeks ago. So I just thought, I don't know, I don't think he met with anybody to my knowledge.
No.
Did he? No, he was just
He did not. We took a tour of the golf course. Obviously, we introduced him to the greens committee because that was happening. Mike and I met with him in the office for a couple hours and we went by to say hello to Tanya, but she was off that day, so.
Okay, I just thought you guys
I saw him, I saw you guys too. I mean, I saw you. You didn't see me, but I
I didn't.
I knew he was here and I was impressed, so.
Yeah.
But he did promise me that he would be back, so he must, he must be a man of his word, so.
Or a fan of Arnold Schwarzenegger.
I would like to see a little bit of fanfare about we've changed in the restaurant. I think that just, it may help sell it, it may not, but I think we need to let them know we've changed. Okay?
I agree. We put some stuff in the marketing that should be coming out here shortly.
Okay.
It's in, it's in production more than anything else and I know Mike and David from our team has been talking about strategies, so I
Yeah, part of the marketing, we've, to step up that role, we, David, you guys all met David, we have a weekly call every Tuesday now, it's Tuesday or Wednesday, that we will go over all that stuff to make sure that we're on track from our marketing plan that we put out and all the new marketing initiatives, some of which you're hitting on, that we're going to make sure those are happening, yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next item is resolution number 2021-02-05-03, a resolution of the Sun on Lake of Saving Improvement District to accept the resignation of District General Manager Tanya Kennedy, approve early termination of her contract, approve of mutual general release and approve the revised job description for a new general manager. I just want to, before I turn it over to David, I want to let you guys know that there's a couple of other things I'm going to bring up on this resolution and we'll talk about and we will redo the resolution if passed or whatever decisions we make and that way it'll be passed today. There'll be amendments to this if they go through. Okay? So David? Oh, I need a motion.
For what?
For resolution number 2021.
Oh, just in general for the, as it is?
Yeah.
For a motion?
I'll second it for discussion.
Any discussion?
Lots.
Okay, I don't know what the best way to handle this. Do you guys just want to dive into potential amendments or do you want me to answer any questions? Obviously, Tanya, as you're all aware that she's issued her letter of resignation, she's asking it the effect of February 16th, which is about 38 days early of the 60 day requirement under the contract. My understanding with my communication with Omar, that the numbers in the mutual general release are correct regarding her overtime, I mean, her sick pay and vacation pay.
Just vacation and sick?
Vacation and sick, yeah.
I think that'd be the best way to handle these things first and then we'll get into anything else. Is there any questions on what we're doing here, these four points?
Yeah, I, I understand the accrual of vacation time as being something that is transferable and that she, any general manager would get paid for. I'm having a little bit difficulty understanding why sick leave would be compensated. That is set up for the purposes of if a person was to become ill, that they don't lose any wages during that period of time for whatever length of time we set as applicable. I don't see that as being something that should be granted on termination.
Oh, it's in the contract.
It is in the
It's in the contract. So if we ready employees to leave the employment of the district or resignation or termination, employees shall be entitled compensation for all accrued vacation and vacation in 50 years and accrue sick.
Stand corrected.
I assume tonight, this is probably a bad assumption, that the board of supervisors signed off on the contract, whomever the board was at that time.
Yep.
And I think it's just something that we should look at for the next one. I mean, it's, we have to, I agree, Greg, but we have to.
No, if it's in there, then I have nothing to stand on.
Yeah, unfortunately. I mean, well, fortunately, I don't know how you look at it. It's in there.
Yeah, just to, just so nobody's mad at me, this was before my time, this was before I signed off on the contract.
And just for clarification, I understand this has been accrued, so this is not unbudgeted money that we have to come up with. It's money that was accrued and set aside so that there is money coming out of some accrual bank somewhere as if it's already been spent. Is that correct? I wish Omar was here to be able to answer that. I find that hard to believe.
To my knowledge, we have not been accruing vacation and sick time as far as cash set aside.
Okay, but if the contract says for all accrued vacation and sick time, if the vacation has not been accrued, then there wouldn't be anything owed.
But accruals, yes, as far as a liability on the balance sheet, yes, we do have accruals that have been set aside.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
So I'm not saying that there's a, there's a cash bank that is going to come out of. I'm basically saying that we're already showing that it's been spent, so it's not going to really impact the budget. It may impact the cash flow, but it's not going to impact the budget.
No, it's going to impact the budget, 33,000.
We don't have it budgeted. We don't have it budgeted as far as any payout.
Okay, but if we've accrued it, if we have accrued this money in the past, then we were showing it spent at the time that we accrued it.
Can I get back to you on that? I don't know that that may be the case, if I can get back to you on that. I mean
When are you going to do that? You're asking it to be gone before the next meeting.
The money was not accrued.
We didn't budget the
Well, she's saying it was accrued, but it wasn't set aside.
The timing, what she earned was accrued. The actual money was never touched.
So we did not, we don't show, I guess what I'm trying to clarify is normally when, when you've earned vacation time, that money is shown in the budget as spent money.
It's shown in the financial statements as an expense and then booking the liability as an accrual. So there's no cash involved.
Exactly.
Correct. That's correct.
So when we're now paying you this accrued vacation time, it's coming out of that accrual that we're already showing that we've spent under prior financials.
I'm shaking my head.
That's the way it should be.
That's the case unless there was some other requirement that we didn't have to book those type of accruals in a modified cash basis of accounting. Okay, so you have accrual statements and then you have the modified, so.
And we don't know the answer. Okay.
I can look it up real quick. Give me a few minutes, I can look at the financials and see what we have on the general fund.
Okay.
Do you want to wait to hear?
Well, it's, she's checking in on it, so let's deal with the amendments that you wanted to have us discuss.
Okay, there's a couple of other things and we can, we'll vote on these amendments, so if they pass, the first one is approve how we're going to operate the district while looking for a replacement for General Manager Kennedy.
I guess the question is, do we want to appoint an interim general manager or not? The existing resolution does not contemplate an interim general manager.
But it doesn't contemplate not having an interim general manager. This is dealing, the resolution is dealing with our relationship with Tanya, not with anything else.
That's correct.
So I don't, I'm not sure.
There is no succession plan in place so that if a general manager resigns, anybody steps up into her role. So if she, if her resignation is accepted, there will be no general manager. So the question is, is do we want to talk about appointing an interim? It doesn't have to be part of this resolution, but if we want it to be, if the interim is what's desired by the board, my recommendation would be to make it a part of this resolution so that it's seamless as opposed to waiting until the next meeting to appoint one.
Okay, well, I would certainly agree. I think that we need an interim general manager. I think that we need leadership at the top. I'm not sure that we can run this district as a board because we can't talk to each other between meetings and we need somebody who can deal with the day to day operation, somebody that staff can go to and somebody that can come to the board or at least the president of the board to get some direction if it's needed. So I think that's, my, my recommendation is that we appoint a general manager. And I actually looked into this because of my belief that we needed a general manager and I have a recommendation for who we would appoint to a general manager. Somebody who is familiar with the operation, who is familiar with the board, and that would be Dan Stiegel, who no longer lives in the district, so he's not directly connected, but he is familiar with the staff. He worked with the staff on the benefits program not too long ago and he sat on the board, so he understands the issues with sunshine laws and I think he would be a key person to put in place to give us the time to vet the necessary people that we need to vet to get the right person to take us forward rather than rushing into a decision.
What, I mean
Okay, so if we want to take that in the form of a motion, we can say that there's a motion to appoint, do we want to?
Chair, I'll move that we appoint an interim general manager and that that interim general manager be Dan Stiegel.
So we've had a motion, do you want anyone to second?
No, I'm not, wait a minute. Let's decide, let's decide if we want an interim manager or some other way first before we get into individuals.
Okay, I'll revise my motion that, I'll revise my motion that I move that we hire or appoint an interim general manager while we determine a replacement.
Seconded.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
I just seconded.
Okay. Okay. Now we have a discussion.
I think it's a good idea. I mean, what other options do we have? I haven't heard, anybody got another idea?
I don't have another idea, but I think we had talked about at a meeting earlier that we divided up, but I think this is a much better, much better, I think there should be somebody here until, until we get, what I met with Dave and Tanya.
Oh, you had a meeting?
Yeah. As president, I had a meeting because we had to set up stuff for the resignation and so on and so forth.
The other potential course of action would be to have no general, no interim general manager and then have department heads report to individual supervisors. The issue there is, of course, supervisors can't direct staff individually and so that's, I see that's where the, you know, there's an area of concern is if someone needs to make a decision, unless we have an interim general manager, there would be no one to make those decisions aside the department heads themselves.
You see, and I couldn't make that decision. That's a board decision, Ray, so I was going to, you know, so that's, what we're doing now is what I wanted is to, but I never thought of that at that time. That was
Okay, so we're talking now about an interim manager?
Yes.
We all agree? I certainly do.
Well, we need to have, if you guys are done discussing it, we need to have a public comment and then we'll vote on that amendment and we can start talking about who we want to put in there.
Okay, is there any more from the board? Okay, public comment? No public comment?
So Chrissy? So we'll need to vote on that amendment?
Yeah, this will be a vote on the amendment.
Supervisor Hotteling?
Yes.
Supervisor Brooks?
Yes.
Supervisor Harret?
Yes.
President Gilpin?
Yes.
Okay, so now there's going to be an interim, so now we need to have discussion or a possible motion, that's why we want to look at that.
I would move that we appoint Dan Stiegel to that position.
I've got a name too, but I have to, I didn't, you obviously have talked to Stiegel.
I talked to Stiegel. He's fine either way. He understands that it's the board's decision as to whether or not, but he's happy to come in and help.
Well, I've talked to somebody too, but I would need to go back to that person and make sure that person is on board before we do something here. And the person I talked to was Wally Edge. I actually thought he'd be most qualified. He's been on the board before.
I think, well, I can't speak yet. Greg, you got any opinion?
Well, I know both individuals. Having known, since I've been involved, I know that Dan was on the board. I've had other conversations with Dan, so probably right other conversations with Dan, so probably right now I would go with Dan.
Okay, and my opinion is, is we should vote on Dan and if Dan's selected, then we can talk about Wally.
What exactly is this person's responsibility going to be?
I'm sorry?
What is this person's responsibility going to be?
Same as the General Managers.
I'm not so sure I agree with that.
We're talking about appointing an interim General Manager. The interim General Manager has a job description, so that's what we would be appointing. Now, the Board wants to live that, now that you've got the ability to do that as well.
What I would be looking for, I mean, to go with what Mike was saying, if we were going to give the supervisors each a piece of the cake, so to speak, we would just be there to help them and coordinate it, not to make decisions for them, correct?
Correct.
Well, that's what I want the interim Manager to do.
That's not real practical, in my view. I think the interim General Manager needs to fill that role and make those daily decisions, reviewing as necessary with the Board, but we can't give direct direction without a meeting and we're not going to have another meeting until February 23rd. So I think we need to have somebody who can make those decisions. The Board can't do it, which means we need a General Manager who can, or we're going to become a really ineffectual district.
I believe there has to be an individual that is responsible for making the decisions over the district, based on the input from the staff and, if necessary, from the Board. But I think it's got to be certain one individual to make the calls.
And we have, not, sorry to interrupt, but we do have a motion. Does anybody want to second that motion for Mr. Steagle?
I think Dan did.
Second, okay, okay. So then what we can talk about is, we can, we've got a motion and a second, if we want to vote on that motion and see if it passes, then we can talk about if anybody else wants to make a motion to limit or to modify the interim General Manager's responsibilities, we can do that as well.
Okay, we have a motion and a second?
What qualifications has he got?
We need public comment for the motion for Dan Steagle to be appointed as interim.
Is there any public comment? Hearing none?
Supervisor Brooks?
Three to one, no.
Supervisor Harris?
Yes.
Supervisor Hotteling?
Yes.
President Gilpin?
Yes.
Just to, I just want to remind the audience, because of Supervisor Brooke, or Brooks Branson not being here, I think most of you are aware that a two-two tie is a no. I just wanted to know that, if something happens, okay?
So, do we talk compensation?
So now that would be the next, the next thing is, is do we want, I don't know if we want to talk about having a negotiation with Mr. Steagle. Have you had, what sort of conversations you've had with Mr. Steagle about, is he expecting compensation or what sort of compensation package do you be looking for?
We've had some general, he understands that we can't, I certainly couldn't commit to anything. He obviously was a high-powered manager that made a lot more, but he's, his belief is what we're paying Tanya would be fair without our having to pay him benefits because he's got his own retirement and whatnot, so he's not looking for any kind of benefit package. But he says it's not a make or break, so I would recommend that we have the President negotiate a compensation package for the interim General Manager, not to exceed what we're currently paying the existing General Manager. That would be my motion.
Should we bring that back to the next Board meeting?
Well, why, I guess my take would be, I think we need to have that negotiated and as long as it's within the parameters that I recommended, that it not exceed the current salary, that the President can commit us to that so that we can get him on board while we've still got Tanya to be able to compare notes with.
Let's say Tanya's General Manager through the sixteenth.
We haven't approved that yet.
Yeah, so that, oh, that's true, correct. So arguably, if we can get this negotiated, Tanya would be the way able to execute that because I don't see a way for the President of the Board to negotiate something.
I'm sorry, why can't the President negotiate it? The General Manager can.
Well, if it's within, if it's within this epic.
Right, we've set up specific parameters, that if it can be agreed to within those parameters, that it can be contracted.
I would like, I'm not going to support, I want to see the agreement and I want to sign off on it. I don't think that's asking too much of supervisor.
The problem is, is that we won't be able to have any overlap from a process standpoint.
I'm sorry, there's five of us on the Board. If there's going to be a negotiation and something settled on behalf of the district, the Board should sign off on it like everything else. I'm not saying I won't sign it, I'm just saying I want to see it.
Okay, well, it may, my motion may die for lack of a second anyway. I don't know if there's a second, so we can continue the discussion or?
What exactly is the motion again?
My motion was to allow the President of the Board to negotiate an agreement with Dan Steagle as the interim General Manager to come on board at an agreed figure not to exceed what we're currently paying the current General Manager.
I'm not seconding that.
I have a question. If we, if we hold off, he won't be able to start until two weeks or until the next meeting?
Well, no, he's already been appointed, so the amended, as it stands right now, the amended, the resolution has been amended to appoint Dan Steagle as the interim General Manager. So the only, the thing at issue now, so if this resolution ends up passing, then he will be the interim General Manager, but we don't know what his compensation is. So that would still be up for negotiation and discussion. The question is, is whether or not he's going to agree to do it.
Do we legally have to have a contract?
I guess that's going to depend on Mr. Steagle. Because he may say, yeah, I'm willing to be the General Manager if you're going to, interim General Manager if you're going to pay me, but, you know, just because he's been appointed as interim doesn't mean that he's going to accept the position if he's, unless he knows what his compensation package is going to be.
It sounds to me, why don't we have him meet with Tanya and have them work it out? She's still here.
I would have no problem with that as long as he's working. I don't want to wait until the next meeting to do all this.
I'd say that's the issue.
I mean, it just sounds like, again, we're delaying and delaying.
Is Dan Steagle available?
He just resigned last week.
Is Dan Steagle available to come here today, right now?
I don't know if he's able to come here today or right now. I invited him to come and he decided that it would probably be better for us to have the discussion without him in the room.
We decided that we want him. Will he be, would he, could he come here and agree to the terms?
If you want to take a recess, I can give him a call.
What's your thoughts on that, Ray?
That would be fine with me.
Then we'd wrap up exactly what it is that he's going to get compensated.
Yeah, we still technically don't have a second on this.
I know we don't.
Can I step down in a second? I step down in a second.
We could call a special meeting if we need to do that.
How much notice do we need to provide for a second meeting?
Ten days.
Yes, it's just, and again, in ten days you'll be gone if you, if we grant your request.
I could check the, I think this might constitute an emergency situation, we might could check the sunshine laws, so there's no requirement that it's, to comply with the sunshine law, my recollection is all that has to be done is it has to be noticed. I don't know if there's a specific form of notice. Generally, you know, for special meetings, we have, you know, we have county ordinances that instruct what the requirements are, but in an emergency situation, I think we have the ability to just advertise as best possible.
Because it's an employment issue, does it have to be an open meeting?
If it's going to involve the supervisors, I mean, if something's going to be voted on, yes. So, I mean, that's the big issue is, you know, if the Board has the ability to give negotiating power to the General Manager, the question is, is as Supervisor Brooks has stated, there's, at some point, he's going to want to vote, he's requesting a vote on whatever that compensation package is. So if we want to do that before Tanya is her last day, then we're going to have to have a special meeting, otherwise it would be at the twenty, the meeting on the twenty-second or twenty-ninth, whatever it is.
Craig, what do you think about if we just take a, take some time and see if you're calling?
Well, it would seem to me that if he could, if he was here and agreed to what we would be willing to pay, that would seem to satisfy Ray as to what, that he knows and we make, that it's this, this, and this, and he can vote on it.
Yeah, but I've got to tell you also, if we're going to continue to add amendments to this thing and it gets out of hand, I ain't going to approve it. I'm going to say I want to see it. Let's not ask him too much. We can go one meeting without a General Manager. My God, I hope we can go one.
I'm not as confident in that as you are.
And I just think we either call him and see if he can come or we vote. I mean, it's, and if it's a two-two vote, it's a no. You know, we've already voted that he's going to be, I mean, it's pretty simple to me.
You want, you guys are asking me to vote on a General Manager?
You can vote, no.
A person for a General Manager whom I haven't even talked to. I didn't even hear his name till today.
Well, that's because we can't talk to each other prior to the meetings because of the sunshine laws.
That doesn't mean to do with the wrong way.
Well, but on the other hand, we need to act quickly because we actually lost two weeks because our notice of resignation came right after our last meeting, so we couldn't even meet without a special meeting and a special meeting requires ten days' notice, so we wouldn't have been able to meet that much earlier anyway. So, you know, it's one of those really bad timing situations and I just don't think we should go rudderless as a Board. You know, it's possible that Mr. Steagle would agree to come on board, tentative to approving an agreement, and if we can't come to an agreement by the next meeting, then he would leave. But I don't know if we want him to come on board as an interim General Manager without some kind of an agreement.
You know, the vote's three to one, so I'm going to lose. I just think you guys are handling it the wrong way. You're trying to move away, a painful situation, but man up, deal with it.
Mr. Brooks, you have, you can have an opinion and it's a good opinion because you're one of the supervisors, but I don't think part of your position is to lecture this Board. You have an opinion, okay?
I just stated.
Okay.
You have an opinion?
That's right, and I'm giving an opinion, I'm not lecturing.
Okay, so we technically have a motion and a second to have either Tanya or President Gilpin negotiate a compensation package for Dan Steagle that does not exceed the compensation package that Tanya currently has. We've had board discussion, unless there's any more board discussion, we can have.
We don't need you all to do it, Tanya. Why does Craig and Mike have to do it?
It doesn't have to be. I'd say Tanya is the acting General Manager, there's no reason she can't negotiate that.
Okay, and I would say we should also put a parameter on there of interim General Manager for a term not to exceed four months. We ought to be able to make a decision on a new GM by then.
Well, if you're going to stipulate it, you should say until the new General Manager starts. You don't have to say four months.
Well, I'm not saying for four months, I'm saying until a new one starts not to exceed four months. If it takes us longer than that, we'd have to exceed the agreement, but I don't want him thinking that this is a long-term deal. He understands it's a short-term deal and we need to have that as part of the negotiation and would be my.
I think you can just say until the replacement is made.
Okay.
All right, so do we have a public comment on the?
Yes, I'd like to call public comment if there's any.
Tom Costi, resident. I'm curious, how do we get along without a General Manager when the General Manager goes on a two-week vacation? How does the Board currently do that? Don't we have somebody in-house who takes over those responsibilities when the General Manager takes two weeks off?
I couldn't answer that myself, I would defer that to.
What's happened many times over the last forty-seven years, how's it worked in the past, Tanya?
My belief is Tanya is available by phone.
I've never taken two weeks off in ten years.
Well, I understand that, but you are allowed to.
Consecutively, sorry.
You are allowed to.
So what I do is, if I'm not in the office, then I refer to my Department Heads to handle.
I understand, that's how you do it, but that's not how it's been done in the past. There has been somebody who has assumed the responsibilities and is trained to do so and has been shown confidence that he's able to do so or she is able to do so during the General Manager's absence. And I just can't believe that we're this hamstrung. And I'm also questioning whether or not there's actually a requirement of ten days for, is it two weeks or ten days for a special meeting? Okay. Just a question, how do we get along without a General Manager if they're sick for two weeks or if they're on vacation for two weeks? How have we done so in the past? We've got forty-seven years of records on it, thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Anybody else?
George Puffenberger, resident. I can tell you from experience, when previous General Managers have been sick and/or taken vacation, if there was any item of significance, the Attorney, along with the Board President, would discuss those things and if a special meeting was required, they'd do it. In my twenty-seven years here, that never happened. I can also tell you, when I was appointed interim General Manager, when I was the Operations Manager of the District, my salary was negotiated with the President of the Board. I served a week prior to having a salary. I know the current gentleman who's been nominated. Personally, don't think salary is going to be an issue. I don't think he's going to want to stay any long amount of time. He's willing to fill in based on his commitment to the district. He's an honorable man, he's a learned man, but I don't think the district ought to try to get along for, you don't know how long it's going to take to get a new General Manager. This is probably one of the most important decisions this Board's going to make. It can be long-term. A proper General Manager would set the new direction for this district. Right now, the district is backwards. The Board's responsibilities do not include running the district. But since that has been happening over the last few years, a competent General Manager will work through that and you'll work together as a team. The flow of information coming from the staff to the Board will be significant, it will be thorough, and you'll have decent decisions to make based on the information available. I don't see why it takes hours to make a simple. I don't see why it takes hours to make a simple decision. You can talk these things to death. It's either simple yes or no, we're going to have an interim general manager, he's not going to change the world, he's not going to make dramatic changes, he can do them. He's sitting in a chair, responding to board things or any item that needs responding to. The attorney would be one of his key resources. That's would be board president. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Okay, back to the board.
There's nothing else we can call for a vote?
Well, I think if there's nothing else said, we just, we can call for the vote.
Can you read the motion?
This will be to negotiate an agreement, a compensation agreement with Dan Stiegel to act as general manager, not to, until the next general manager is hired.
Not to exceed the current salary.
Not to exceed the current, yeah, conditions or the current salary conditions undertaken.
Only myself or with the board president? Am I negotiating that with?
No, I think.
With the board president and Dan or just me? Is that the motion?
The motion would be revised to have the general manager negotiate the agreement, and that the effective date should be as soon as he can start. To allow as much overlap as possible with Tanya.
Are we ready? Supervisor Harret?
Yes.
Supervisor Hotteling?
Yes.
Supervisor Brooks?
Yes.
President Gilpin?
Yes.
Quickly, I do have the answer.
On the accrual?
Yes, sir. In the general fund, we have accrued $85,792 in compensated absences and utility fund $34,039.
Okay, so it's not going to be a budget impact, it's just going to be a cash flow impact?
It would be.
We'll be taking the cash, but it doesn't change the budget issue.
We, well, let me get back to you that on how we're going to do that, because it's not budgeted, but it's accrued.
Right, but it's already, it's already shown as spent.
It's already expensed. That's in the government-wide financial statements, so it's just a little bit more complicated on the modified accrual basis of accounting. So, utility fund is a full accrual-type fund, it's an enterprise fund. With the general fund, we have two sets of financial statements. We have the government-wide financial statements, and then we have the day-to-day modified accrual basis. So, government-wide are only shown at year-end, which that accrual is on the year-end statement. So, when we pay out a package based on the mutual release, the expense of payroll will be higher than budgeted. We haven't budgeted, so what we can do is we can, we have the ability to do a budget amendment and provide that to the board. We're probably going to need to. But my salary is split between general fund and utility fund.
Okay.
So, I will.
Be sure that Omar is prepared to clarify all of that for the next meeting.
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Okay, the next thing I have is, we've got to talk about how we want to hire a new general manager and specifications, and I'm not quite sure, David, you can give us the options we have?
Yeah, the two options that I see, the, to my understanding, the position's already been advertised, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so it's already been advertised, but that advertisement is modifiable.
Of course.
Yeah.
So.
What, what did it say?
Again, I think what's attached to the job description that's attached.
Which job description?
The one that was approved by the board in 2012. That's the one we listed. So, any modifications today, we will update Indeed, and we can also update that through the Florida Association of Special Districts.
So, we'll have that current job description?
Yes, yes.
Was it advertised?
It's been advertised on Indeed and through the Florida Association of Special Districts, FASD, which we are a member of.
How often do we plan on advertising that? Just once?
It's a continual, so it'll be out there until the board says they will no longer receive resumes. So, if you say four weeks, whatever you decide, we'll keep it up.
At this point, is there any, any date on it as to applications will be accepted until?
No, we can modify that to a certain date if that's what you prefer.
I don't know if it's necessary, I just wondered.
When did it go up?
It was posted on Monday afternoon through Indeed, and then Florida Association of Special Districts, I think, he sent me a confirmation on Tuesday of this week.
I'm computer illiterate. Indeed, I-N-D-E-D? Dot com? I don't, dot com? I can see it on there?
Yes, sir.
And what was the other one?
Florida Association of Special Districts, that it's advertised on their website, and then they also send an e-blast to all their members within the state of Florida.
Okay, thank you.
Now, you indicated you had two suggestions?
Yeah, so with the, as you're, you know, as we just stated, the one that says, current job description is what's up there now, then there's a separate list of the drafts, so we need to figure out if there's any changes that we need to make or want to make to the advertisement as it currently exists, and then how, how long we want it to be up, like when we want to make a deadline or if we want to make a deadline, as to when we stop taking applications, and then how we want to deal with those applications. And there's basically two ways that we can do that. Number one, the board can set out a list of criteria, like a checklist, and then district staff would be able to go through the applications. My understanding is they all come into the HR department, correct, Tanya? They would all come into the HR department. District staff and the HR department could then take the criteria that the board has prepared and, you know, have, you know, two piles, this, you know, if a, if an application meets the criteria or does not meet the criteria. If it does meet the criteria, then once the deadline comes, all the applications that have met the criteria would then be brought to the board for consideration. The other alternative would be to appoint a committee, which would have to be a sunshine committee, and then the board could say, you know, bring us, the committee is directed to bring us the top five applicants, but that would have to be a sunshine committee.
A sunshine committee being?
Being one that's advertised, meet with public, you know, we've added.
Minutes and all that.
Minutes and all that, all that stuff.
Do you have an intro to find?
That's the next question. Who's the head of HR here?
Who is our HR department?
Who is the head of HR?
Chelsea Johnson.
Wow. I didn't know that.
Yeah, well, Omar supervises that department as well. He's the supervisor, he's the department head.
So, he's the head of the HR.
But she handles all the human resource questions, employment, benefits, and her insurance.
If we did it in-house as opposed to a sunshine committee, how many people would you recommend participate in this group?
To me, it would just be shuffling papers. I mean, it would be, as the applications come in, whoever, you know, the people in that department or the person in that department would check that application versus the criteria that the board has set out, and if it meets the criteria, then it's accepted, and if it doesn't meet the criteria, it's rejected.
So, that would be Chelsea's responsibility?
Correct.
So, we, but then, basically, then we would have.
Potentially.
Have a pile of applicants that had.
Potentially, yes.
It could be, Danny could be, I mean, I'm the.
Explain to me again, this committee would have to review publicly all of the applicants?
We would have, for a sunshine committee, we would have to have, we would have to advertise when the committee was going to meet. That meeting would be open to the public, and minutes would have to be taken. And then, the people, the members of that committee would sit down with the, all of the applications and choose whatever top five, three, 10, whatever number the board set out as their, you know, as the number to bring to the board for final consideration.
Well, I, my personal thing is that it's got to be a committee of some form that does this, because I don't think, well, I could see, you know, people are going, probably, let's say 80% of the applicants, if we get that, would meet the criteria, so therefore it would just become into a pile of 80% of the applicants having to be reviewed by us in order to determine whether or not to, that's.
Yeah, I could, I could see this happening a couple of ways, and having been in the business world, there's criteria and there's criteria. And there, I would recommend that we perhaps have three stacks. One is people who just don't meet the criteria. One is the people that clearly meet the criteria, and one is they don't meet the specific criteria, but they have some promise because of this or that or the other thing. And my recommendation is that we have staff, which in my opinion would be not just Chelsea, but maybe Chelsea, Omar, and Dan, the interim general manager, review them. Once they've determined the two stacks that we should review as a board, we could receive all of those applications as part of a packet that we could then discuss at a board meeting and decide if there's any from that group that we want to eliminate to whittle it down at that point. So, we would effectively be having the staff create the filter. The board would then serve as the open committee to determine which ones we want to meet with or which ones we don't want to meet with until we get to a point where we're comfortable that we've got a group that we want to call in for interviews.
The big issue, the issue with that is, the determination as to whether or not a sunshine committee is required, or sunshine committee is, yeah, required, is if there's any decision-making authority. So, if anybody is making, if any person, not a board member, or not, you know, not part of the, you guys are the decision-making authority. So, if you're delegating decision-making to any other entity, whether that be a person, a committee, or anybody saying that you guys aren't going to make a decision, even if any decision-making at all, meaning whittling down, it has to be sunshine. So, in order to avoid sunshine, the only way to avoid a sunshine committee is to set forth, these are the criteria, only deliver to us people that meet this criteria. If there's any decision-making, it has to be sunshine.
David, go ahead, go ahead.
What about headhunters?
Of what?
Headhunters.
We can utilize that if we need to, but if you want to wait and see what comes in over the next few weeks or.
Wouldn't a headhunter be deciding which ones to send to us? That's a decision.
I mean, that.
And you're telling me that they can't do that, and I'm going, that can't be right.
Anybody that is making a decision as to what the board, it's like, like I say, it's like, it's like the difference between, you know, how we talk about fact-finding, you know, fact-finding, if someone's just fact-finding, that's fine, but if someone's making a recommendation, that's.
But isn't fact-finding a decision? I mean, if there, if somebody on staff is determining they do or don't meet the criteria, that's a decision.
Well, no, I mean, no, I mean, even someone, if one of the decisions is, has a master's degree, that's a yes or no. Is they, are boxes checked? And if the board says, all these boxes must be checked in order for the, in order for the applicant to be considered, then that's, there's no decision-making, it's just someone's checking boxes and making sure that all the boxes are checked.
I'm sorry, can we use a headhunter or not?
We can.
You're saying no?
No.
Why, they're determinings that they meet the cri, they're providing names of people that provide, that meet the criteria.
Correct.
That would be the same as.
It's the same as Chelsea doing it.
Oh, no, I mean, if it's, I guess I'm misunderstanding what you're talking about as a headhunter, as someone that's going out, like, I'm going to go find a specific person that I'd be going to recommend for this job.
Right. Well, couldn't he, couldn't a headhunter?
You can't make a recommendation, a recommendation is a decision, so.
Could they not provide us names of potential?
Yes, as long as, as long as you guys set forth the criteria, you guys set forth the criteria.
To the headhunter.
Yeah, to whoever, say, we want you to bring us a list of people that meet this criteria.
Well, the other, the other alternative would be that the board could each receive all applications, and then at the next board meeting, determine as a board who we want to eliminate as we whittle it down, board meeting by board meeting.
Correct.
Of course, we're assuming we're going to get a lot of applications. We don't know.
We hope so.
We haven't gotten anything.
And maybe we'll get a standout.
Avon Park at 85 for their city.
Yeah.
Probably, yeah, I would say we have some already. I'm sure.
I'm sorry?
I would say, yes, we probably have a handful already. I mean, I'll have, I can look when I get back to the office. Perhaps Chelsea looked?
Yeah, I know that, because I follow the paper, and Avon Park advertised for $85,000, and they got 85 applicants. They're starting, the general manager in Avon Park makes $85,000.
So, I guess, my take, because I know that if you have black and white criteria, you'll lose good opportunities, because there are some people that can be good managers that don't necessarily meet every.
Yes.
Black and white criteria.
Agreed.
So, I don't know that anything is really gained by a committee other than the board. I'd like to be able to see all those, so my, my recommendation would be that we, as board members, individually receive every application and schedule time at each board meeting to discuss any that we can agree to either eliminate or move to the top of the stack.
Or just set a deadline, and say, bring us, if the deadline is, you know, the day before the next board meeting or the day before the first board meeting in March, and just say, we're going to, the cutoff is going to be that date, and then all of those applicants, every applicant, application that's received by that date is then delivered, and you guys would talk about it at that first board meeting in March. I guess that's, I guess the concern is how, how quickly we want to get this, try to get this position filled.
I want to get the right person in the job.
Yeah, I don't want to rush it.
That's a decision you guys make, but I'd like to say, I have no issue with what Supervisor Hotteling has just suggested, which is, as the applications come in, those copies are delivered to you, and at every successive board meeting, it can be discussed, and like I say, there, we may get a applicant that everybody just says, this is the person.
Well, you're not going to know until you talk to them.
Agreed.
Do we need a motion first or before I go to public comment or?
Going back to the headhunter, the headhunter could find people that wouldn't necessarily be interested necessarily in a new job, but they know what kind of experiences they have, and they go out and say, there's an opportunity here that you might be interested in.
That's, I guess, the issue, you're basically saying someone to make sure, because this job's being advertised, you're talking about paying someone to go out and actively look for people that may not see the advertisement.
Could possibly be. I don't know what headhunters cost, but it just seemed like, they usually work on a percent, right?
Yeah.
Percent, yeah, thanks for that. But, you know, I personally would like, if a person has special district experience and also has golf and restaurant, I think it's important to have some golf and restaurant experience for this district, because that's a significant part of our day-to-day activities here, along with the utilities and the paving and the governmental stuff, I understand that. And it would seem to be like maybe outside of, of course, Indeed is, is all over the world, I guess you could say, but I guess we could see what we're getting in it, but I certainly was not close out using the headhunter.
Yeah, I'm inclined to see how good the applications we. Yeah, I'm inclined to see how good the applications we get are from Indeed and the, and the state, and if necessary, look at a headhunter down the road. I, I think we can probably get some good applications. I'm hoping we can get some good applications, and that would be the, the criteria to look at. The other, the other thing that I see that we need to discuss, and we don't necessarily have to have a firm discussion, but we shouldn't really talk about what the, what the proper salary for this position is going to be, too. As President Gilpin indicated, the position for the general manager at Avon Park was advertised at, what, eighty-five thousand? Do we have a salary range on our current listing, job posting?
It just says, "Starting, starting at or from ninety thousand."
So, we've already got that number out there?
Yes, but you're not set to any number.
Well, no, but we would have a hard time coming in at eighty-five.
But if that's the number you want, we can change it. There, there's no requirement. I, we had to put something in there, because if not, the questions and the phone calls would, would come in significantly, so to mitigate that, but that number can be changed. If you want a bottom number of eighty-five, we certainly can do that.
How do we handle things like a signing bonus? Because I was reading your contract, and you got a signing bonus. So, how does that get here? Relocation fees, how does that get here?
That'll be negotiated.
Who negotiates that?
Generally would be me and a supervisor appointed by the board, probably the president.
I know, Daniel was, it was Kurt McCullough, one under, one the president at the time.
Kurt McCullough, John McClure, and then I hired my own attorney, so the four of us.
So, anybody that we interview, if they were to ask us these questions, we would have to say, "If you're chosen, we'll have that discussion when we work out your contract."
No, I think that would all be part of the, that would be part of the interview process, is that'd be, the majority of the, of the negotiating would be the, would be done at the, during the interview process, and then the...
Perhaps a second interview rather than a first interview.
Correct, correct.
I'm sorry?
A second interview rather than a first interview. A first interview wouldn't necessarily negotiate all those terms, but by the time you get to a second or third interview is when you would start negotiating terms of...
So, the first interview would be...
Yeah, because the way I would see this going is still would be, the, whenever contract gets negotiated, it would be brought back to the board for final approval.
Right.
Whoever, whoever negotiates, it doesn't make a difference. The five of us will decide.
Right.
Yep.
Do you see several interviews with this person?
Well, I, I don't see several interviews with everybody, but I see that we'll probably have a first round of interviews with however many candidates we think are worthy of an interview, and then narrow it down to a few candidates where we would call them in for a second interview, and then perhaps a third. I've, I've never been hired on one interview.
It'd have to be individually, or?
Oh, no, it'd be the board.
Yeah, it'd be board. My recommendation would be do it at a board meeting.
Do it at a board meeting, so the public would be...
Yep.
Yeah, it's a beautiful thing.
But you have a lot to say about it, Ray, when we, I think, when we start going through who we want, and you'd be very involved in that.
I'm looking forward to this. Tell Dan he may be on a little bit longer than court.
Is there, is there a certain date that the board wants to advertise the position until? February twenty-sixth is three weeks, March fifth will be four weeks. Well, actually, it was advertised on Monday, February second, so...
When is our board meeting? After the twenty-third?
March, there's only one board meeting, and it's in the evening, on Tuesday, March sixteenth.
It probably should be before that, guys, I think.
So, March fifth?
Yeah, I would say it looks...
Like a good date. March fifth sounds like a good date.
Mark, what, to cut it off?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I, I mean, if we're having the meeting on the sixteenth, that means the board packet would go out on the eleventh.
Or on the ninth, which would be a week prior.
Right, nine. So, if we had, the fifth is the cutoff date for applications, and then all those applications come out to us, either with or before the packet on the ninth, so we can start reviewing them, because there's all going to be, I hope, a lot.
But the, the applications can come to us as soon as they come in, can't they?
Yeah.
For us to review and then hand on to the next person?
Well, we...
We just make notes as to who we want to keep on, so when we do meet...
We, we can't make notes to each other as to who...
No, I'm not, but I can make...
Whenever application...
This guy made, this person, as far as I'm concerned, is out. And if we all agree that he's out, then it's...
Well, but we can't agree until we get to the board meeting.
Right, I understand that, but I can review the applications beforehand.
As opposed to getting them all at once and have to go through the whole stack.
Right. We're skipping the stage of somebody looking at them before us. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah.
So, all the applications are received electronically right now?
No, nothing will be trashed.
The criteria.
No, I don't want a black and white criteria.
Nobody's going to do that for us. That's what I'm saying, we eliminated that.
No, Chelsea can only do...
Chelsea will eliminate the ones that don't qualify, right? No?
No, because some, some may not qualify by black and white terms, but have some other redeeming value.
They'll all be received, what's wrong?
Well, if you want them in paper, she can print them, but what I'm saying is that everything is received electronically. It's rare that we ever receive an application these days by paper.
But then you can forward that on to us.
Absolutely, we can do that electronically or by paper.
Yeah, what kind should it be?
So, you, you want that delivery once a week, twice a week? I mean, what I can do is have her on Monday send you the first batch, which would be one week from advertisement, meaning it was advertised on the second, so I'll have her...
Yeah.
Through, whatever comes in through the weekend, you'll have on Monday?
Yeah, that's fine, and I would suggest that along with that is a compiled list of every application, so that we know we didn't miss anything, so that we've got a running list of all the applications, so that we, if, if for some reason we don't remember a candidate, we can go to the list and say, "Okay, I got to find that one, and if I can't find it, I can call and say, 'I need this application.'"
Wow, wow. You don't know what we're talking about?
Yeah, we're talking about a lot of work. Thanks, Tanya.
Sorry.
Not as sorry as you're going to be.
Remember, remember, I'm available by phone, or if you still need me, I'm not, I'm not leaving.
Let's say we get fifty. We're going to get them weekly, so by, by the time of the meeting, we will have seen everything.
That's...
And then we're going to come in here, or wherever, to a board meeting on the sixteen, and we're going to go through each of the names of the candidates and do a first pass. Is that what we're talking about?
Yeah.
And in that, we should probably quit for the day.
And that's the six o'clock meeting?
I, I don't, I don't know, I mean, it's all a matter of board discussion, but I think that it may well be that we can quickly eliminate several of them, rather than discussing everyone in detail.
Well, I mean, we'll call out, what we should have, I guess, is, Prissy...
You'll have a checklist.
You should have a list on the board, and we'll just go each name.
And each name, and then, you know...
Try and do it that way.
Yeah, because it's kind of like when we, when we had the, the applications for the management companies, Craig and I were ready to quickly eliminate two of them. That's a third of the, the list, so I, there was some discussion as to whether we should do it that quickly, but we ended up doing so.
And then I think, depending on how many we get after the first pass, we'll have to make decisions on whether we have to have a second pass, or we're at the point where...
If we, if we don't have any real standout applicants by the end of March fifth, then at the March sixteenth board meeting, we'll have to discuss whether we're going to continue accepting applications or hire a headhunter.
I thought we were going to do this at the March sixteenth board meeting.
We are, but at the March sixteenth board meeting is when we would have to decide whether we're going to continue with more.
All right, we don't think we have somebody...
Right.
Because by that point, the application, the applications were closed.
Okay.
When's the next meeting after the sixteenth?
Early April, yeah.
We got a real problem, because we're into budgets.
April ninth, which is a Friday, nine AM.
I think I'd like to suggest that we have a special meeting assigned right now for March twenty-third. I don't know. I, I don't know what for my calendar right now, but I'd like to...
Let me check the MGA events on that day.
It's a Tuesday.
I'm sorry.
March twenty-third.
Is there a date on that day?
Not on a Tuesday.
Huh?
March twenty-third is a Tuesday. It was March sixteenth of the Tuesday night meeting.
I just, I just think there's going to, you know, we're going to have leftover work from after the sixteenth that we don't want to wait until the ninth to do.
Well, then, why, why don't we call a special board meeting for Friday the nineteenth?
I, I would agree. I'm okay with an extra meeting because of this.
Okay, so you want to skip, why don't we do it on Friday the nineteenth?
Well, that's fine. I just don't know about the day. I don't have my stuff in front of me.
What's on the nineteenth, Mike, anything?
It's a, it's a Friday, and it...
Our time to begin, or any...
But I'm aware of, I don't have it in front of me though.
I think it, it originally scheduled was the member guest, I think.
That sounds about correct.
But it's canceled, but I didn't know if you guys were going to have something in place on that.
Somebody came out with a three-day, member, member, member.
There's going to be a member, member of some sort.
I don't know, maybe that is.
Yeah. Well, I haven't heard that, so...
I'll see what I can come up with.
Because all it says is that it was canceled, but I know we talked about trying to, trying to put something in its place if...
They said, they gave a date already for the member, 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 and they said details to follow.
Okay, well, I haven't seen it.
But I can't remember the date.
While they're looking at that, do you guys want to take a look and see if there's any additional, anything that needs to be changed with the advertisement?
Well, I mean, I, this is my idea, because I called Tanya up and I said, "Just jot down some things that you think the person should be qualified with." So, some of these do run into the job description that's already, or the, the draft.
Yeah, my, my sense is that...
I don't know why.
The, the existing approved job description is sufficient for the advertisement, but I think your list is a good list for us to have, whatever. The, the new list is a good list for us to have during the interview process.
As stupid as it sounds, do you think it's important to put proficient in Microsoft Office?
Yes, because some people aren't.
Yeah, I think we ought to add that.
It's very important to be proficient in that.
We didn't put that in the first time, right? It's not in the...
It's right here. Well, I put it in here.
No, 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 no.
But it's not in the...
Oh, in, it's not in the, these, no, it's not in the advertisement.
I think for sure we have to add that to the ad.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Hmm, okay, I can...
I mean, I can't do this stuff.
I can't imagine anybody's replied, I can't do that.
I can't either, but... I can't do PowerPoint, yeah. I don't do PowerPoint. I think it should be added, but that's...
Got no problem with that.
I mean, we could ask them when they're here, I guess, or we can...
Yeah, well, I mean, the risk is that we'll think somebody sounds really good, but they don't know PowerPoint, which is hard to believe, but it's possible, and therefore we'd be interviewing somebody that we really didn't want to hire. So, you know, if you, if you want to add some of these things, I'm not opposed to it. I, I think it's not necessary. I think we're going to get qualified candidates, and if you had somebody that had all of the skills you want and couldn't do PowerPoint, would you not hire them?
If they could do PowerPoint, I'd be okay with that. Maybe not, they could do Excel or Allo, that might be okay.
Yes, definitely. I mean, it's up to you guys. I just asked for this list, I, you know, I found it to be helpful. We don't have to use it at all at this point in time.
Yeah, I, I think it's a good list, I just don't know that we need to modify the, the, if we're going to modify it, then I think we need to spend more time figuring out exactly how we're going to modify it, and I'm okay with the way it's standing, is what I'm saying. But, but if you guys want to have a modification, then let's go point by point as to what we want to add to the list.
I mean, that first line up there on this piece of paper?
Uh-huh.
That's kind of important. Don't you think?
Yes, but don't you think that it's covered under the current job description?
The nineteenth is part of the...
The primary function of this position is responsible for policy development, program planning, fiscal management, and operation of all district functions, programs, and activities. So, and your bullet one is plan, organize, coordinate, and direct through district managers, and support staff to work of the district.
Well, what about number two? Considerable knowledge of the district charter and laws governing special districts in the state of Florida. That, to me, is pretty important.
That's pretty important, but you've just eliminated everybody from out of the state to put that in as a requirement. It's a good thing to have, and I'd love to be able to know whether they have any familiarity with that, but I'm not going to make a hiring decision based on their current knowledge of those laws.
And there is a handbook that the special districts, they do provide, which is very, very lengthy, that you can become knowledgeable in, you know, after you are a manager, but this would be a skill set, because we talked about what skill sets are, and as a general manager of a district, you should be familiar with those state of Florida rules and regulations.
So, we would, we would require any new hire to quickly acquire those skills, but I wouldn't make a hiring decision based on whether or not they currently had a working knowledge of the law.
Yeah, you have to remember how unique our district is.
Ray, I, I agree with your, that, and to me, when I'm looking at it, that will be very important. I mean, but we might not have one, but I think that's an important thing that we need to look, but I think we do that individually.
But if they've got a handbook out there that you can learn it, you know, that's, I think, I think that's more of a nice to have than a requirement. I think it's more important that they have a lot of these other skills, because they, we can, he can be taught, he, she can be taught the Florida policies.
Okay, is there anything else, you guys? Is there any public comment?
Are you awake? I'm sorry, at what stage are we in discussion right now?
I have no clue.
Well, we're going to go back to, we got an amendment, probably to make a motion on.
Is there anything else you want to add, another amendment, or are we going to do this return?
I don't have any more, but...
Yeah, I think everything that we've discussed, yeah, the only, the amendment that we've discussed has already been adopted, and that's for Dan Stegall to be interim and for Tanya to negotiate his compensation package.
There's no...
So, there's no other pending motion right now for any amendment, and I think that based on the, the proposed, the proposed method of review, nothing's required.
Okay, do we want to stipulate a starting date? Or do we need to stipulate a starting date for Dan?
We said as soon as he could start.
We did.
The negotiated agreement...
I'll report back to you, I'll report back to you as soon as I have that conversation with him.
Why do I feel this whole thing's been arranged?
Well, not on my part.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the discussion at the end.
I said, "Why do I feel this whole thing's been arranged?"
I haven't talked to any board member or even Tanya about this.
I didn't say you did. I didn't say, that's all I said.
Okay.
So, it's a no-purpose question, all we have to do is vote on the resolution as a minute.
Okay, there's, there's two points to the resolution that we, I think, still need to discuss. The early termination and the general release.
Early termination and what?
The general release.
Oh, general release.
Well, I don't know why we have, that it's gonna save us $10,000 in there.
And I should, I should have used the word potentially, in that, and I apologize for not including potentially, but that was just my estimation, as if she's leaving 38 days early, she's not gonna be paid those 38 days of salary, assuming that if, you know, if this was rejected, that she would be, you know, working through the 60 days. That would be her salary for that amount of time. Potentially, but now, say, now we're talking about paying Mr. Stegall, so that savings, you know, dissipates.
So the...
Do you think you take that line out?
There are people named after it, who move back to close, they move to remove it. I have no problem with that.
I move to remove that line. Okay, I'll go with that.
One second.
Motion, a second, any further discussion? And then we need to stipulate by a different public comment.
Is there any public comment? No, none.
So this is all on this resolution?
Correct. We're gonna eliminate that where as clause about the...
I'm gonna call now. Supervisor Harret?
Yes.
Supervisor Hoteling?
Yes.
Supervisor Brooks?
Yes.
President Gilpin?
Yes.
Okay, then, um, I'd like to discuss the general, the general release before we talk about the early termination, because they may impact each other. I have, I have two concerns. One is what does, what's the value of the general release? What do, what do we gain from it? Uh, and two, understanding that Mr. Schumacher works for the district and he's preparing this for us. He's also worked most closely with the general manager as opposed to the board. Uh, and I'm wondering and thinking that perhaps we should get a, a peer review of the general release so that we understand that it's taking care of the district and not just the general manager.
I'm, I'm sorry, I don't, I'm lost.
Okay.
Let me do a little bit of explanation. So basically, this is just a mutual general release, very similar to this mutual general release that was executed when Mr. Wright left. And it's basically stating that while Tanya was employed as general manager, the district has, is basically saying that there, she's, they're releasing her from anything that she did while employed as the general manager. You know, there, there's no, there's no outstanding issues of, of payment or, or any potential lawsuits or anything, or anything that she did while she was in the position. And Tanya's in turn releasing the board, saying that there's nothing that the board did while she was employed regarding her employment. That's an issue.
I thought this was part of the resolution, it's not, it's separate, but it's a separate part of the resolution.
Well, we just approved the resolution.
No, no, we were, we...
We're just, we, so far, we've approved certain parts of it.
So, so I guess my suggestion would be, you know, that part, part of the challenge here is that if we give her this general release, and, and, you know, we've worked with Tanya, we generally trust her, but we're essentially giving her a get out of jail free card through February 15th if we approve this general release now. So who knows what she could do between now and then that would obligate the board? Um, and, you know, we've got, we've got various things in discussion. I'm not sure where we are with all of the existing contracts that are out for review. So we're, we're basically holding her harmless for anything that she has done, and she's holding us harmless for anything we've done. Well, I know what we've done, but I don't know everything that she might have done.
And just doesn't have, let's say, we're, the approval will be of this form. We don't have to execute it until she's actually left there or leaving the position. So we could wait until the 15th or the 16th to actually execute this, if you're okay with the form of it. Just by saying, because today is February 5th, she's gonna be working for 11 more days. I'm concerned what may happen in those 11 days.
I, I understand that, but the board would be approving it now, and we wouldn't, we wouldn't know what she did between now and the 15th.
Why not? What do you mean, we wouldn't know?
We, we wouldn't know. I mean, we're, we're basically saying, we're okay to the form, and come the 15th, Mike is gonna sign this and release her. But we, as a board, there may be something that she did in those 10 days that we're concerned about, and we won't have another say in that. So I'm, I'm just saying, from a clean perspective, I would recommend that we have a peer review from another attorney to make sure that the board is protected and that, uh, we make the general release and her termination effective on February 23rd and sign everything off at the next board meeting. Which would give her another week where she would be able to work with Dan.
I need coffee.
Any other comment from the board?
I want a higher lawyer.
Well, let me, let me do it this way. I'll make that in the form of a motion. If there's no second, it'll lie.
Okay, we have a motion to hire a lawyer to look over what David has done.
And, and continue her termination until the 23rd.
Continue her termination until the 23rd of February. Any board discussion?
You need a second first.
Oh, sorry. I guess it dies for lack of second.
Now, I don't have a problem with it being extended until February 23rd. Where at that next, at that next board meeting that we could sign off on this. As far as the other, you know, we are, the district attorney continues with us after she is gone. So it would not be in his best interest to give us anything that wasn't up to speed, in my opinion. So I, I, I still, if, if you feel more comfortable having this general release signed on the 23rd day of, that's fine with me, too.
I'm, I'm confused on what we're trying to accomplish. Well, I know you're trying to protect us.
Correct, I'm trying to protect the board.
As I understand it, the concern is that Tanya's last day, or has proposed last day is gonna be February 16th. So the board will not meet again until February 23rd.
Right.
And so you're, based on how this is currently drafted, you're releasing her for everything that goes through the 16th, but you guys won't know, that's 11 days from today. And you guys won't meet again until the 23rd. So whether, the, the concern is whether or not she's going to do anything in that gap period that would raise an issue that you don't want to release her from.
Gotta be kidding.
Probability's right between slim and none.
Yes, in my, in my opinion, that's probably a low priority, but I would say Mr. Superdude is highly concerned because of the Dan.
So you wanna keep...
Just saying, just, just to...
This would keep her on the payroll to the 23rd?
Correct.
Technically, yes, it would keep her on the payroll for that additional seven days. And just to, if there's concerns, this is being, being her operating as general manager. Any decisions she makes as general manager. In a, you know, hypothetical situation where she just did something radical that's outside her job description, that would not be covered by this release. So if she was to write a $100,000 check to herself, that would not be covered, obviously.
That's only, it only covers what she's capable of doing under her job.
Would it be possible if I signed that on the 15th?
Well, that, that's, that's the thing, is if, if we approve it as written, you would sign it on the 15th, because we've approved it. You wouldn't have an option of not signing it.
Okay.
No matter what she did.
Right.
I, I agree, it's a small risk. I'm, I'm just, I worked with so many attorneys over the years, I look at risk.
I want her out on the 16th. I, I have a feeling she has an obligation. I could be wrong, but I don't want to screw that up either. I'm pissed she's leaving, but she's leaving. I don't think we ought to penalize her because of that.
I move to, move to accept the mutual general release as written.
Unless part of it's...
Oh, okay, never mind.
So we're not amending it, there's not a need for another amendment.
I got confused, too.
I'm so confused now, I don't know what I'm...
Do you have something else, you?
No, those were my two points, is the length of the term and the...
Do we get them both?
And the release. Well, you both, lack of a second, we're basically back to the way it's in the current resolution.
Okay.
So is there anything else that needs to be discussed about as the whole amendment that we currently have, as from what's currently drafted, that her appointing Dan Stegall as the interim, Tanya's gonna negotiate a compensation package? That does not exceed her own compensation.
Great. For a period of time that his replacement, her replacement is named.
Until this, until a later time.
Right, and you've eliminated the whereas.
Yeah, and after amended. As a result of the discussion, we could go ahead and amend it, or we can, we can, um, as it was, as it was originally amended.
Is there any, uh, public comment on, on this as amended? Saying none?
Call the question.
Oh.
You guys ready?
You guys ready? Okay.
Supervisor Harret?
Yes.
Supervisor Hoteling?
Yes.
Supervisor Brooks?
Yes.
President Gilpin?
Yes.
I do, I do have a question, just out of curiosity. When you amend these resolutions, where do we, where can I go to see it?
We'll get, we'll get drafted up and then we'll be, we'll just execute it if it's scanned up.
What I could do is when it's executed, I'll send you a copy by email, if you prefer, or it's through hard copy, whatever it says.
That's cool. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on.
Does that cover everything we have to, with that?
I think so, if there is.
Yeah, we're down to the action item, we're through the...
Do we, we can, do we miss anything, Tanner?
If we did, I'll, I'll talk about, look at my list, and we'll, we can...
The only thing we missed was thanking her for her service and keeping us in line.
Thank you.
No add-on items.
I've already told them my feelings, I'm not...
You did.
Okay, add-on items?
Add-on items, none.
Petitions and communication?
None.
Staff reports?
I'll go first. I want to talk about Tregga Street real quick. The Buckingham's been waiting here all morning long. She's been here three or four times about this, the drainage, drainage, so you asked me to go out. We sent letters to 20 people on the street. Oh, sorry. We sent 20 letters on the street. We received, uh, 13, 14 replies. We have 12, 12 yeses, two noes, and the, and, and, um, the remainder did not reply. What the problem is, is the, um, during the rainy season, these people can't get in and out of their driveways, or can't get their mail because the water is so bad. A couple of years ago, we did the same thing. We went through this, and they worked on it also, also very hard. I've, um, I've gone so far as called every, called all 20 homes myself. Now, that's not usually something we do, but we sent letters to everybody. Everybody received a letter, plus, plus they had to sign for, sign for a letter. So they basically get two letters and calls. There are, um, the ones that don't want it, the problem is, is they're at the end of the street. So the water doesn't get to them. But if we put drainage where, uh, the remainder of the street where we should, the water's gonna get to them. So what we want to do is we want to, want to go one side of the street, the street all the way down, and it's the side with, um, uh, the 4728, 47 down, all the way down that side. It's been a problem for years. I even got a letter from somebody that, that lives on the street that's been dealing with it since '04 or '05. That's how long this is going. Tanya can explain, um, the, uh, obviously, the majority of people want it, but some don't. So Tanya can explain what we have to do in order to get it done, or we, we just don't do it. Um, I don't know if the Buckingham's want to speak about it. But, um, we can't, we can't go in and do it. Tanya, can you explain how that, that goes?
In this case, we did not have 100, 100% consent from the property owners. Since we are going in on a project and taking out a portion of the driveway, remember, driveway's our personal property. We, um, have done projects like this in the past where the homeowners were required to reimburse the district for that. Without 100% consent, the only way that, my recommendation to move forward with this project would be through a special assessment, and not just one side of the street, but possibly both sides. So we do know that we have a sock pipe that's currently in the ground that is, that doesn't work. It's, it's tore up, it's ripped, whatever the case is. But, um, I don't recommend the district, uh, perform the project without 100% consent, because we are taking, you know, and removing the driveway and then replacing it, but that is personal property.
Um, also, um...
Just a quick clarification. If, if the two people that are objecting are at the end of the street, is it possible to modify the plan so that it's not impacting their property and still...
No, 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 no. It's gotta go right through, because where, where the drainage product's gonna go is gonna go down the whole side. And there's also one, one further rubber, I think he's, uh, which he didn't get back to me, you know, a yes or a no, and I think he may, um, uh, be against it. He's the one that's been fighting this for '04 or '05.
What do you mean by fighting it?
He, he's one of the first residents that lived there, and he's been complaining about the drainage from then. But he doesn't think that he should have to pay for it because the contractor built, um, uh, built his home and did the drainage. What happened was when they put the drainage in, they put the drainage in before they built the homes. Then, as they were building the homes, all the contractors were driving over the pipe and, uh, crushed it all. So that's why it doesn't work. I mean, I'm surprised we have this many people. David, you were gonna say something.
The, just when it comes to, down to the, the special assessment, the district has the ability to go in there and do, and do a special assessment against all the affected properties. But if, if we don't have 100% participation and a, a lack of a vote, or a, you know, absenteeism counts as a no. So in order to do the expedited version of a special assessment, we have to have 100% agreement. Otherwise, we have to go through the long way of doing a special assessment, which is much more complicated and costly. So in the past, we've, we, because this has come up before, in the past, we said if we don't get 100% participation, we're not gonna do it, because the, the special assessment procedure is so lengthy and time-consuming and costly.
So we're at a standstill, and we, well, we don't do it?
Well, yeah, we can, we can do it, it just is gonna be, it's not something that's gonna be done 100%. If we have 100% participation, it's a thousand times easier than if we have to go, than if we have, than if we don't have. And like I say, it's either 100% or not.
Do it, involves litigation?
No, no, not litigation, just, it's like I said, the process is much more complicated. Probably take, my, as a, as a rough estimate, it's be six months probably to get everything together to, to properly do the special... to properly do the special assessment.
And there's a couple of public hearings that you'd have to do, I think, too. But as a special assessment, it would go on to the district. It would be on your assessment bill, but only for that street.
Just on those owners?
Yes, only for that street. So that would definitely, we could have that, you know, by the billing in November of 2021. If that is something that the board wanted to look at.
And the special assessment be in excess, in excess of what it was going to cost them originally?
Originally, you mean a couple of years ago, or?
No, no.
Well, right now, it's $1,000 a home.
Right?
Each driveway.
Would that be what the assessment is, the special assessment?
Yes, yes.
It would be just for the driveway. The whole project itself is not $24,000.
Right. The special assessment would be $1,000 for each, per home?
Yes, that would be approved by the board, and then we go through a public hearing process for that.
We also did have requests, the ones, there were, I think there were five that, that are for it, but they asked for a payment plan. So we've talked about that, too. There's a couple of single parents in there and stuff that, that, you know, stated they absolutely want to do it. Their kids can't play in their front yard during the rainy season because of this. And so we talked about a payment plan for them.
And with the special assessment, we can divide it out. If you want to give an option, two, three, four years on that $1,000, you can do that in a special assessment situation.
But we just, didn't we just do away with letting them pay partial payments on assessments?
Yes.
The special assessment that we build would be designed and built that way.
All right, all right.
So that is a benefit of the special assessment.
You know, and some people said they'd pay upfront because they just want to get it done. You know, I mean, I don't know if you've ever gone over there. I think, I think it was Ray that told me that he's gone through there, and it's bad, you know? And it's been years. So I really think that we, we should finally do this. Right now, the cost of the projects is around $48,000. But minus the $1,000 per home, so.
Brings it down to?
Well, there's 20 homes, so.
There's some 28,000.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, once we put it out the bid, then it may come down, you know, because, you know, I just got, I just got a price from one contractor right now. So, but I think the Buckingham's want to speak.
Yeah, well, I'll get to him, Ray.
Okay, Mike.
All right. Mike?
Is there a cost?
I won't forget him.
Okay. Is there a cost to do it the hard way, the assessment the hard way versus the assessment the easy way? Is it going to cost us a little money to do this?
I mean, just the, just the timing.
Inflation could impact this. The, the timing of the payments for the special assessment would be structured so that you get a discount if you pay upfront, and it costs more if you stretch it out, or if we pay our assessment now, it's less than if we wait until March. So the, the special assessment would be structured the same way, where it costs more over time, or an interest over time, or how would that work?
Can we look into that, David? I haven't, I haven't
I'm relatively sure that it can be, I'm relatively sure it can be done that way, yeah.
We should do that, I agree with that.
Anything else?
And, yeah, my, my question would be, who on staff understands how these special, district, special assessments work and what's necessary to make that happen? Because that's something that you're not going to be here to guide us through.
I have all the information, so David and I can discuss it. I think it's
But is there anybody on staff besides you that is familiar with this process? Omar or anybody?
I provided all that to Omar. We've never done a special assessment since I've been here, but I can provide it all for Omar.
Yeah, just be sure that Omar and Dan both have that information so that we can walk it through, because I'm, I'm pretty sure we're going to agree to doing this, but let's
Good.
So I do want to mention the sock pipe real quick. You know, the, the only way to prevent no water in these driveways is to put in a full culvert system and then, you know, the driveway's on top. I went through the meeting in 2016 and listened to the engineer, I listened to the residents, and the only way to prevent, which should have been done in the beginning, is culverts in that whole neighborhood, but it wasn't done. So the sock pipe, I mean, if we get, you know, a hurricane, there's going to be water in the driveways. But this sock pipe, what it does, it will move the water faster. It does not mean that it will 100% prevent water from being in those driveways, especially when a high water table exists, or we have, you know, you know, substantial storms in one year. It will not 100% prevent. I need to, I need to emphasize that.
Okay, so
This does not correct necessarily the entire situation. It will move the water as it should to, from, from the west to the east. The pond that exists on the east end of the street, we've also, we do maintain that, and it will definitely help, but not 100%.
Okay, so I'm, I guess I'm confused. If, if that's the case, are we being recommended to approve moving forward with a sock pipe or with the culverts?
Culverts is a whole different discussion. Back in 2016, it was going to be about a $10,000 assessment on the homeowners with the driveways and the culverts, yeah. It was, it was, the project itself was a very large project because it also involved the road itself. And the road itself has the water and sewer line underneath it because the sewer lines, they weren't able to lay the sewer lines in the back because of the water table. So it's, that's a whole different conversation, but I just want to emphasize the sock pipe will help that neighborhood, but it will not, you know, in, in times of heavy rains and other things, it's not going to 100% prevent the water, unfortunately. You've got to think of a bowl.
Well, I hope we
That street is essentially like
I hope we tell the, the people that
And we have, we've also done the sock pipe on Sunrise, and it, and it cleared it up 80, 90%. And we get no complaints in that area.
Yeah, that is a good example, Sunrise is a good example.
I mean, and Drew and I have talked about it many times. We thought of putting drainage out the back, and it was very costly. So we're trying to keep the cost down for the people that live there, and we explain to them, you know, it's not 100%, but it's going to be 80 or 90, you know, so.
Well, I'll add my two cents to it, and I hope that we go ahead and do the project, and we just have to assess those people. And, but it needs to be done. I want it, you know, I want it helped. But just so we tell them, it might not be 100%, but
Well, I've told everybody, I mean, I've called everybody, and I've never done that on any project. I know that people have been concerned. I was over there when I saw a woman actually back out of her garage, you know, right? Through the water, get her mail, and pull back in. That's how she was getting her mail. I mean, that's, so.
Okay, anybody else here on the board?
I just want to clarify one thing, because Tanya, you mentioned both sides of the street. Are we talking both sides now, or just the one?
Just the one this year.
Okay.
So are we, we're talking about doing the sock pipe on one side but assessing both sides?
No, no, no.
I'm saying there's sock pipe on both sides of the street. The, the system, like you said, they installed it at the wrong time. Contractors came in and tore it up. I mean, to me, it would make sense, if you're going to do a special assessment, do both sides of the road, fix the sock pipe that's in the ground, get that done. I mean, it's, it's a long time coming. I understand the one side of the road is worse, but we have the issue on both sides of the road. It's not just the one. If you've driven down there in the summer, there's water standing on both sides.
So we'd be talking, instead of 28,000, maybe 56,000?
About 50,000, if we went both sides. See, the opposite side of the road is not as bad. I don't get that many complaints because, because the way that everything's pitching, you know? So we thought we'd do this first year, see how it worked out, and then, and, you know, I mean, because a sock pipe, we don't have to touch the road, we touch the driveways. So, you know, if we did it this year or next year. And Tanya and I have talked about that, the doing both. It was a lot of work just to get everybody on board for this, you know, phone calls, letters, you know, the neighbors meeting, you know, so I think if, you know
Any cost savings to the district if we did both of them now, though?
I don't, well, no, because, well, from next year, I mean, from now to next year, probably a little, but I, I mean, I can't see it that much, so.
Okay, folks, you want to come up and talk to us? Sorry for the delay, but I appreciate you coming.
You know, the issue, we have, I mean, I understand that it's not going to be 100% this, but boy, anything would be an improvement. We've got all that water. I mean, it's over your ankles halfway up your leg to be able to get over, to get the mail and to get back. And we've dealt with this for how many years now? Back in 15, we presented it was very, it wasn't cost-effective. For the residents to do that, you'd never get them to buy on. And at least $1,000. My concern is if this is going to be delayed another six months. It's dry, it's the first time it's been dry, our driveway, for the last seven months. And if we procrastinate and wait and put that assessment, push it forward, we get rain again, we're going to be, you're going to have to be waiting until that rain, until the water subsides before you can get in there and start digging, I think.
They have a de-watering mechanism, you know, for projects like that, that they, that they can still go in and, and, you know, install things like that.
Right, yeah. I don't know how long, I mean, how long the process, you know, takes on, on this side. You know, David or Tanya can tell me that, because I don't know how, you know, I mean, will we have two meetings? You said two public meetings?
Two meetings that has to go on two bills.
Right, but so
But I mean, it doesn't
But I think, I think we don't have to wait for the special assessment to be approved.
No.
We can get going on it now.
Yeah.
So we, okay, so that's, in other words, the work would start now?
No, the work can't start until we have the
We have the special
The whole process, so it's going to be at least six months.
We have to put it out for bid. We'd have to go through the special assessment hearings so that we make sure it does get on the bill. But the, the big part of that would be to go out for bid. And is this only on the one side of the street that you want to put it out for?
Yes.
No, I mean, I'm asking you.
Yes, yes, for now. I mean, listen, I love to do the whole thing, but I'm trying to save the district money. And I really believe, you know, because I go through it quite a bit. I think if we get that one side, it's going to really be a big out, because we saw it on Sunrise.
This is a project we have not budgeted for, so we will have to look at our drainage budget and either reallocate monies, you know, for this, which is not a problem.
Sounds like we can put it in next year's budget anyway, unfortunately.
Yeah.
So I thought there was money that would
Well, we have money in, in roads, we have money in roads and stuff, and so we talked about moving, yeah. So we're hoping We were going to
Debbie, look at it this way. A year ago, you had nothing. Now we're going to fix it. I mean, I hate to be blunt, but you were nowhere a year ago, right?
Well, I was nowhere in 2015, we, you know, this whole, yeah.
So at least you have a commitment that we are going to fix it.
And they voted on it, Debbie, and we can move on it.
You got to be a little bit patient.
And I think we should do that. Let's, let's go with it. Yeah. Okay.
And we're sorry, I'm sure Ray, we're sorry it takes so long, but we have no
The water, I mean, we've got this bubble on our driveway that they can't move along, it's be walking, you're going
Well, we don't mind, I mean, the other side of the street, like Mike says, that dries up a lot quicker than I mean, I had to put boots on to go get my mail until December 3rd. It was the first time I could walk across the driveway, so.
That's awful.
You know, and
Yeah, we've made investments in the house, you know, we put a pool in out back, we try to keep it looking. You know, we've invested, we've spent a lot, that's why we moved here, so.
I can tell you, I can speak, I think for all of us, we're going to try to do this as quick as we can, but our hands are tied, but we will get it done.
And it's entirely possible if we get this side done, and the other side sees how good it works, we can get 100% from the other group, if, if it becomes necessary to do the other side.
We're moving on it, like Ray said. I know Ray's a little blunt sometimes, but he's right. You know, let's go, if they want to vote in, let's do it, and then we'll get going.
We can't be surprised that we didn't get 100% consent, because all you got to do is look at Washington DC, right? You can get 100% on anything.
Well, I was happy with the 12, I was really happy. I was surprised, actually, so.
And some of them are renters, so I don't know if that
Well, it's the property owner that would have to say.
That is probably impacted by why we didn't respond. But we've been stopping down, we've tried to drop the neighbors, we've done our part to try to get them on board and
Interpreters, we had
I've done a lot.
Right, we had to bring interpreters over because we couldn't speak to some people, and, you know, that's kind of slowed us down. But, but we're working on it, so.
Thanks again for waiting. I'm sorry to put you through what we had, but at least you know a little bit more what's going on here.
Well, it was either that or we're going to, we're going to move out. I mean, we don't want to stay here the rest of the retirement.
We want you to stay, so
You know, so, we appreciate that, so move forward.
So for the next meeting, I will advise, I'll have David advise the board on the process of what we need to do, and we also have to put this out for bid, so that, you know, again
Okay, what do we need to send it out to bid? Can we send it out to bid now?
Yeah, let's get it
Well, I'm
Well, I think I'm pretty close.
Right now, I don't know, just, I have, with, next week, I'm short-staffed in my finance department by two people. I'll just have to take it as a
Well, we're pretty close with the price we think it's going to be anyways, because I had a couple, you know, I had the one contract, there's a lot of work, you know, and he's usually pretty much on. So we know roughly where we're going to be for budget, so.
And then the engineering design, how long, that will take long, will it?
No, no.
So I have to wait for that, and then the map and everything, and footage and all that, when we put out for bid. So it'll be, well, I'll have an update for you for the next meeting. I'll have David or Omar give that update.
Okay.
Oh, we're not talking these meetings, those are going to be special, on March 5th, they're going to bring back the plan as to how this is going to move forward.
I believe she's talking about the public meetings that have to take place because of the
Yes.
Because of the special assessment.
I believe so. From what I have read in the past, there has to be a two, two public meeting process just to hear from the public. That's for the special assessment part.
And, and that's after we get the bids and the design and everything else. So that's not going to happen immediately, but as quickly as we can pull it together.
Yeah, I guess I'm, why do we have to wait on getting the proposal
You don't.
And doing the work without the special assessment? Why can't we proceed?
We can.
Okay.
We can proceed, and then the special assessment will be billed
Which is a side issue that we have to take place. All right. So now it's a budget issue?
It's a, yes.
Do, do we need to have any more conversation on this? I mean, for you guys to do what you're
No.
Okay.
Immediately is not, won't be immediate with, with the engineering design, and then, of course, I'm short-staffed, frankly, but, all right.
Any other, anything else, Mike?
Yeah, I got a couple of other things. We put the sign on Myrtle Beach and Pebble Beach to check the, the speed on the traffic and stuff. And actually, I don't think we need to put speed bumps in those two areas that we, that we came up with. There's actually not, not enough traffic. There was only 6% of vehicles on Myrtle Beach that were going too fast, and that's, that's pretty good around here.
Is that adjusting for golf cars?
Yeah.
Both of those were not petitions, these were just some
Right, well, that's what they asked, so you asked me for a report last time, so
So it wasn't, it wasn't on a petition, right?
Is this the temporary ones for the construction that's going on?
Yeah.
They still, you didn't
I mean, they're not speeding, there's just a lot of traffic, you know? I mean, I got it right here of how many, on vehicles, there It's posted 25, there were 365 cars went by. There were only, there were only two cars or three cars that were actually going over 30. So it's posted 25. So we hold it at, anything 30 and plus, you know, that's what we're going by. So we feel on Pebble Beach, we don't need one there. And Myrtle, Myrtle Beach, there just wasn't enough traffic. You know, I mean, they speed, but there was only, there was, what, 30, I think? There was only 3% that were speeding on Myrtle Beach.
But the traffic was low?
Yeah, the traffic was low. I mean, and, and I don't know if it's just because that week or whatever. And then we also had, oh, I did Sunrise, Sunrise we did.
Where, most of the traffic, the heavy construction traffic will head, as they hit Woods and Irons, they head left on Myrtle, or when they head right, they turn immediately on San Ignacio sometimes. Did you, where'd you have the, the sign? Do you know, where the location?
Okay, Myrtle Beach, let me give you the address, was in the area of Okay, Myrtle Beach, let me give you the address, was in the area of 5072 in that area. And Pebble Beach was 4740 in that area, the homes. And because it registers, you know, where, you know.
Is that right, right or left of Woods and Irons?
It's on left. You go left, and when you hit, yeah, end of Woods and Irons, you make a left, and it was, there was a vacant lot right there. They had it there.
So, I mean, you know, maybe someday there will be, even the rest of the homes get built, but right now I don't.
The vacant lot, right after you turn? Or is it one way?
It's on, it was sitting on the vacant lot as you, to the left on the side of the golf course.
Yeah.
It was quite a way down, huh?
Yeah.
That's where he had it sitting.
Don't they?
I mean, I mean, I just went by the complaints that we had, that's all we did. Also, right now, we have a complaint on Villa Bella. We have the sign there right now. And we're gonna put it there for a week. We had a condo association come to me and ask me about a speed bump. And I told them that we have to put the sign there first and that, so it's there. It'll be there a week, and I'll report back to you in, in case you're questioned by anybody, so.
When you get those, have copies for us.
Yeah.
Okay. Because that's a petition, so.
Yeah, okay. The other thing I have, let me see. Warning notes, warning notices, we had 208. That was done by Bob Brumfield. And the watch orders, we had 416 last month. So it's, it's kind of high for January for, for the watch orders, but a lot of people did not come back. And the warning orders, it's kind of like, it's an average, you know, we do about 200 a month. You know, and that's with trash and people parking on grass and that, so that's all I got.
Thank you. Mike, do you have something, or you got done?
Good morning again, supervisors. I do have quite a few things to update you on. I will start off on the golf course side. Both courses have had a granular fertilizer to the fairways. It's for the overseed. If you've been on the courses, you probably see that the fairways are actually, they're looking really, really good. The, you know, the ryegrass is kind of in full bloom. So it, the fertilizer really spruced that up a little bit. You've heard me talk about tree work the last couple of meetings. That work has been completed. The coquina cart path work that we've been talking about in the capital improvement project, since that was approved at the last meeting, you will start to see some of that start next week. The staff has cleaned out the small bed areas that are around the stop signs at the road crossings, where the cart paths cross the road. There's some, some beds in there, they've been cleaned up. If you've been on the course, you see on Turtle Run, number five, kind of through the fairway, they've started a, a new bed right there, kind of frames a hole a little bit better. That work has been completed, short of the coquina that will be coming in. So they will add coquina to that area to finish up that project. On the left side of number seven deer, where all the, that area where all those homes popped up and all that wooded area that was taken out, we had some room in our landscape budget. So Earl's actually purchased a few oak trees to get started along, along that line. And on that discussion with Earl, he wants to have a comprehensive plan, if you will, for when that happens, as it continues to happen on both courses, that we will not always have operating budget to handle every situation, that we need to have a game plan going forward. So we will bring you something here in the future to, for your consideration on that. Just wanted to bring up the fact that I know we had some discussions at the end of the last fiscal year about the use of temp labor. You know, with the whole, you know, we were, we were slated to end that process of using the temp labor in the year of, of COVID. We've actually dragged that on a little bit farther than what we stated at that time. But the use of temp labor has allowed us to be a little more flexible with our labor and our budget without having to jump through, you know, HR hoops, layoffs and, and other issues. So it is still the plan to, to get away from that. It's just taken us, we've decided to take a little bit longer than we had originally said. So we will work to get out from under that. All right, on the golf ops side, I'm sure you guys realized it was a little cold there Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. Subsequently, golf was a little slow to start the week. So it was a little slow start to February, and that affected a little bit of our FNB revenue. So you'll probably see that adjustment come through my next weekly report. You know, you can kind of see the trend. It is probably gonna trend down, if you will. So just wanted you to be prepared for that. Also, there's demo days. We have a demo day today that's going on right now. We have Calloway and Taylor Made on the range. Tomorrow, we're gonna have Cobra and Ping on the range. Demo days now are done by appointment, appointment only, and they're pretty well sold out. So that's a really positive thing. And just on that topic, I, just to put things in perspective.
Just a minute, Mike. Hey, Dennis? Dennis, could you guys go in the kitchen? Thank you, go ahead, Mike.
I just wanted to point out that the hard goods market here in Highlands County, I've, I've been into other local clubs, and I've been to every club in the county and looked at pro shops. There is no club, or all of the clubs, including probably retail stores in this area, that do the amount of hard goods sales that we do. And I just wanted to give kudos to Andy and how he does that, his demo days that he does. It's, it's phenomenal. He owns the market for around here, some hard goods. Hard goods at the green grass level is extremely difficult because of all the online stores and everything. So the amount of business that Andy does just through his, you know, and his team, for that matter, with his service and how he handles his customers. I just wanted you guys to know that it impresses me, and I just thought I'd tell you guys. But that is remarkable what he does. On the membership side, there's not really a whole lot of an update there. Just so you know, we're at 948,000 in our membership revenue of the original budget of 1,040,000. So it's about just shy of 100,000 short there. The new forecast, when you, when I'm giving you the numbers every week, we actually turned that down to about 970K is what we're assuming in our new forecast. So we're about 20, 20K short of, of that new forecast. Very attainable. On the 50% membership, I usually update you guys that every time. Not much changed since the last time. I think, I think we've added one or two more since the last meeting. And we've kind of given you a restaurant update already today, so. With that being said, if you guys have any questions, I'll answer those now.
I was curious how your resident's day went last weekend.
The resident golf? That is a good question. I will send, I do not have an update for that. I'm sure there was, was several that took us up on that. I will email you that.
I was just curious.
We did a Sun and Lake resident day on the golf course. Yeah, just to try to get folks out here and play and see how nice everything is, so.
And I'm hoping you tried to upsell them to membership.
Absolutely.
Hey, Mike, I got a question. Did we oversee the driving range?
Yes, we did.
Wow. That was kind of a waste of money, huh? I mean, I'm just, I mean, it's pretty well chewed up, that's why.
Yeah, I mean, it, it will get chewed up. I don't know if he's done any fird apps out there, but, I mean, yeah, the driving range is gonna get beat up pretty good this time of year.
Maybe we ought to look, when you do the budgets for next year, whether we want to repeat that, that expense. Maybe come up with something else if you could. I mean, to me, it doesn't seem like it was worth the money.
We can review, we'll, we'll be happy to review that. And, you know, I can talk to Earl about it and see what, what his review of it is and see what he recommends.
Because that was what, 20,000 or something to do that?
No, 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 I think it was two to four.
Oh, okay, good.
Yeah, I was thinking five.
Still chewed it up pretty good, so. The pine straw that we, what kind of cost is associated with that? Not only the purchase of it, but the applying it?
The labor of it? I'm not sure.
I know you're not gonna have that. I'd like to know that for the, my, my personal opinion is, I just don't think it does that much for us. That's just my personal opinion.
Okay, I'll try to email you both of the information.
Thank you.
Okay, is that it? Anybody else? Okay. General counsel report.
Can I go in there?
Okay, go ahead. General manager's report? Mike, just tell him that, okay?
He's up next. Go ahead.
Go ahead, Daniel.
I want to thank the board, and I want to thank the previous board for, you know, when, I've been here 10 years, and this is not an easy decision for me, I will, I will tell you. I'm looking forward to new challenges with the county. And I feel that I have assisted in creating a partnership between the county and Sun and Lake over the years. And I appreciate all of you, working with you. And I'm looking forward to, to my new journey, you know, with the county. Over the next seven days, I'm committed to see that everything is in order as I leave. And even if you need me after, all of you will have my, I'll give you my personal phone number and, and certainly reach out to me if there's any questions you have or any issues, or if there's anything I need to do after I start, you know, my, my new venture with the county. I will say that I was made aware last, last week or the week before, and I don't know if I mentioned this, but the county is gonna be applying for a state revolving fund loan. And with that loan is a drainage project for the entire county. That includes Spring Lake and Sun and Lake as a district. So Drew is working right now to put together potential culverts that need to be replaced that are 40 years old and other things to be included with this new county application for state revolving funds. And this, this could be a, a good venture with the county for that. A state revolving fund loan is usually a very low interest, like anywhere between 1% to a 0% loan over so many years. So if it's a multimillion dollar project, the county will have 10, 20, 30 years to pay it back. And so they included the special districts in this application. So this is a brand new venture that we could possibly, could see some. I mean, I know we've spent over a million dollars in drainage already in the last four years, but there's so much more to do out here. There really is. The infrastructure is aged, rusted, failing. And so as we see new development, new construction, we want to make sure our roads and our drainage are so I wanted to mention that. And I don't know if I have anything else today. I do have some updates for you on Monday, so I will send you some emails about some other potential development in the district.
Unit 12?
Yes.
Is it really?
What? Well, so I'll, I'll talk with each of you on that.
That's exciting.
Did you get, did you get a quote on going out and reviewing that area for tortoises and skinks or whatever that you could air?
I didn't get the quote, but it's, it's a little bit more complicated than that. So I think, I don't know that that would be the best route for us to go, because I can tell you there's skinks out there and tortoises and things. But without going into much detail, since I haven't had the time to research it, I just was approached yesterday. So I, I want to give me, give me a few days, take a look at it, and then I'll inform you, so.
Okay.
That's all I have.
David?
I apologize. Yeah, there's, there's not a lot. The, the one outstanding issue is the, is the bondholder requested foreclosure issue. February 1st was the deadline to get a response. Did not receive a response, but I have been playing phone tag with the offending entity's attorney. And I saw that during, just during today's meeting, I missed another call from that attorney. So I will get back with that attorney later on today and see if we can avoid litigation on that matter. But other than that, I'm happy, sorry to see Ken go, but I'm gonna do everything I can to work with Mr. Stiegel. And anything you need from me in this transition process, don't hesitate to give me a call. Other than that, unless you've got questions.
Any update on the water meter situation?
We, I understand that we got some information. Ken had a conversation with Scott McFoney, and we got some information from, about the current offer from the opposing side. It was a discounted number, but we're still trying to find out exactly how much of a discount that they've offered us.
Is this a mule thing?
Correct, yeah, the mule thing. So they, they, they gave us a quote of, what, 500 and something thousand dollars? Which is discounted from the actual cost, but we don't know what sort of discount we're getting. So we're trying to clarify what the actual offer is. But as soon as we have a firm offer, we'll agree to it.
Okay. Unfinished business?
None.
New business?
None.
Committee reports?
None.
There is no public here? Discussion to and from the board?
Yeah, I got a couple of questions. I, I assume that we are gonna table, for the time being, any conversation on the gas tax, on the strategic action plan? And my question is, what are we gonna do about the recreational master plan? Should we table all those until we have a permanent district manager?
I don't know. It's up to us, I guess.
That's why I'm asking.
Yep. Do we have any thoughts here, guys?
It's, I believe, to my understanding, Scott was going to look into a third, more on the gas tax.
Yes, that's correct.
So we would be waiting for a response from him, but I would agree that those things should.
I mean, I just don't think, I mean, I don't want to put it on Dan. Dan's gonna have enough, I would think, on his plate as it is, to have to deal with this stuff. I mean, I know there was a recreational master plan, something was on one of the agendas coming up.
Scheduled for the next meeting.
Is that something we should do without a permanent district manager?
Well, at this point, we're still looking big picture. We're not moving forward with anything specific. So they were gonna bring back some firmer prices on what these projects would cost us.
But we don't have a person, I mean, I don't think Dan's gonna be the one to negotiate what kind of loans we can get.
But it's not a matter of negotiating with this group. This group is, is putting the plan together. We wouldn't be negotiating for any actual projects, I don't think, until afterwards. But we can certainly get the revised recommendation and cost estimates so we can perhaps further refine the plan before we're ready to move forward with anything. So I don't, I don't think we need to put that off.
My only thing is that the next meeting is when we're going to be actively involved with applications.
No, we've got a meeting on February 23rd.
And we'll, we'll be, we should be starting to review applications well before that.
Individually.
Individually, and then I thought we were going to, well, we weren't gonna talk about them until March 5th or?
No, the cutoff was gonna be March 5th. We're gonna talk about them until March 16th.
Yeah, well, I.
Yeah, I think when it comes to that kind of stuff, the, there's no reason, the, the president and, and Dan will set, will set the agenda. I don't think there's any problem having those as discussion items. So if any additional or new information comes in, you guys are made aware of it. But as, I mean, as far as whether or not we're gonna vote on anything, I don't think that would be advisable until we get a permanent GM in. But you leaving them on as discussion items, and like I say, it'll just depend on what items we have on the agenda. If we've got a light agenda.
Well, I'm just curious, so are we gonna hold on the strategic action plan? Or are we gonna go forward with looking at them? I mean, these are things we left up in the air, that's why I'm bringing them and asking. I mean, I think you should hold on all of it.
Well, I, I think a strategic action plan should wait until we get the new general manager in place. I would agree with that. I would agree with that.
I think it's all.
But I don't want to hold on.
All low priority right now until we get down to it.
But I don't think we should hold on things like resolutions to move forward with the sock drain and whatever we need to do with that. So I don't want to have everything on hold until we get a GM. We need to continue operating.
There's three things. Gas tax, because we talked about that. I don't think we should put Dan in a position to have to deal with that. The strategic action plan, I feel the same thing. And the recreational master plan, I don't want to have a meeting for the sake of having a meeting and then do nothing. And I think that's what would happen.
Agreed.
I don't, I didn't see the recreation master plan leading to any specific action. It's really long-term planning that we're working on with that.
And I think it behooves us to wait until we got a GM that can be a part of it.
Okay. Just, all right, so you guys decide that.
Well, I think if any of you have any opinions on any of that, contact Dan, you know, and I guess I'll be part of that, what goes on the agenda. So just talk to Dan, and he'll convey it to me, so.
Just one other thing, I guess the golf course people are thinking about removing the easy lifts. Anybody got a problem with that?
I don't even know what, I don't even know what easy lift is.
To get the ball out of the cup.
They're breaking down, there's no sense in replacing them, because in a couple of months, I think the COVID thing would not be an issue.
What is easy lift? I mean, you're catching us again, we don't know.
The flag might.
Oh, okay.
That little thing, ride the ball.
Just you lift your ball out, that way you don't have to touch.
So we're just not, I mean, the decision kind of was not to replace them, we just wanted to make sure we have the board's blessing. I think that is a yes.
Would we go back to noodles? Would we go back to noodles?
No, nothing. That's what they're saying. Because the noodles aren't working, people are pulling them out anyway. I mean, if you're in Forsom and you don't want to touch it, you have somebody else pull.
I know, I understand that. I know a lot of people just don't, as far as reaching, I don't have a strong feeling one way or the other.
The other thing, or the last thing, is because we're having the meeting, our next meeting on the 23rd, which is a Tuesday night, I think we got to start advertising or sending out blobs or something, because this is different from what anybody would be accustomed to. And making sure we get it out as often as we possibly can, so that we have a decent, hopefully a decent show of people.
I can say that when I sent out the agenda for this meeting, I also listed that secondary meeting, saying that the time and the place.
Right, but this should be, you got to send.
I also advertised in Highlands News Sun, too.
Okay, I'm just saying, this is different from what everybody's used to.
Yeah, maybe, I mean, I'm not, we can't make them printed, but we could maybe send out a press release and see if the Highland News Sun would run a story that we're having an evening meeting to see if we can get more of the community to turn out.
Yeah, I just think you should, I think you got raised best, just do the best you can. And it's all we can do. Any ideas to try to get more people here would be.
Do we want to do anything like Neil suggested last, at the last meeting? This is really, where we have a State of the Union? Do we want to try that? It's be you, so you got to decide.
I'd be up to you guys, I wouldn't care.
I think, you know, we're hoping that we get a good turnout, and therefore kind of a State of the Union. And Tanya kind of gave that at the landowners meeting, so it's really maybe pick up on those notes from the report she gave at the landowners meeting.
Well, you guys put it together.
Yeah, just one of you tell me whether you want that, and, you know, I'll help. Okay? I have one thing on the board to board, and it's, Tanya has told me that the golf committee charter was never approved. So my recommendation is that we approve it, or have everybody get a copy of it, and if you want any changes, to us, talk about it next meeting and then approve it after that, because it's, I think you went back to, you could find nothing, right? That it was ever?
Never formulated.
Never formulated and never approved. So, and I think we should, you know, I'm in favor of it, but I think we should make it legal. And, but you guys, are we going to get Chrissy to send out a copy of the charter now and have a look at it and make changes to, any of you guys have ideas we can add or subtract to it?
The golf committee is not, what you're saying is, the golf committee is not an officially sanctioned, an official committee sanctioned by the board. Every board agenda has a section for committee reports, and there's no committee report from the golf committee, because no golf committee was ever adopted or approved by the board. And so what we're talking about doing is making it an official board-approved committee that's going to report at each board.
Okay, and we had this discussion a year ago, because I remember when we went through the whole process of reviewing all of the committees, we discussed it, and it didn't come up then, but the part of the discussion then was we didn't want it to be an official committee, because then it would need to be a Sunshine Committee, and they'd have to...
Yeah, but I don't think it's, the way I was explained, it doesn't have to, it won't be a...
And we could avoid it being Sunshine Committee as long as it's fact-finding only and a method for, to minimize the amount of public that, you know, discusses golf issues. So generally, you know, we, the purpose of a committee is to limit the amount of input from the, not limit the amount of input, but to, I guess, focus or channel the input from the public, so that if people have issues, rather than 15 different people showing up at a board meeting and each one coming up to the podium and raising their issues about golf issues, they would go to golf committee meetings, and then the golf committee would send a representative to the board to give a report as, here's what was discussed, and here's our issues that are concerns to the golf committee.
And that's the way it's supposed to be now, and it's not done, but again, no, it's not done, but.
But it's supposed to be the cast, who, in the goal.
Well, it's a different way. In the charter, it says to report to the president, and he would give it the thing, or you report to.
The general manager.
The general manager, and he could do it, but it should be a report every, but I think the charter says either or.
Yeah, my understanding, based on our prior discussion a year ago, was that they could go to the general manager, and as long as it was something the general manager could handle, the general manager could approve it. And if it wasn't, then the general manager would bring it to the board, which she has done, or golf has done.
But it's not really whether they could handle it, because I think they know what they can do, but it's just informing the board what's going on. That's the way it was, I mean, they got their own money and they can spend, you know, you can buy trees, you know? You don't need our permission, but it was nice that we knew you were going to buy trees before you bought them. I mean, that's what I'm talking, you know?
Right, but that's golf telling us what to do, not the golf committee.
But it hasn't been done that way lately.
But that wasn't a golf committee decision, that was an individual decision to buy trees.
Yep. But I'm sure it was discussed at the golf committee meeting.
Yeah, he told us he was doing it.
Yeah, but I'm not sure, I'm not sure where the breakdown is, that we need to address sanctioning the committee as an official committee. Because it's really not operating like a typical committee, because it's not a Sunshine Committee, and we don't want it to be.
No, no, we don't. But if you want, when you get that, Neil, we'll discuss it, and if you want that taken out, we can discuss it. But these are adds or subtractions to it. Because this is a year, every two years, we replace the chairman and the at-large members, and I'd like to get that accomplished, but I want the rules and regulations before we do that.
Are you guys going to want it in hard copy or email?
I think it's best to send it to them in hard copy.
I'm sorry, what was that last thing you said? About replacing everybody?
Yeah, not everybody there. The president of the board, every two years, whoever the president is, has the authority to get a new chairman.
Of golf committee.
Of the golf committee. And as that goes, there's three at-large members that he can replace or keep on or whatever. It's entirely up to him, but we've had, Mr. Butts has been on for seven years, and then I think Ray and Charlie Shields, probably six years. So it's totally up to the chairman, who they want on the board with them. But the other ones, Ray, the MGA, the handicap committee, those are all assigned by those clubs, and nobody has any say about who they put on. But the at-large and the chairman are replaced every two years. And the last time, it was, Joe nominated Bob Butts again two years ago. So that's why I want the changes.
Bob Butts has not been chairman for seven years.
No, no, Bob Butts was on a year before Dan resigned and then took over, or at least one or two years. But Bob Butts was put on by Dan Stiegel.
I thought the way it was working, that the president appoints the chairman of the committee.
Yes.
And then the chairman of the committee goes out and gets the other little guys.
Right.
That's fine. If that's the way it works.
Yeah, it is.
And we haven't set any term limits or year limits or anything like that?
It has a two-year, well, it has a two-year.
Only for him.
Only for the president.
I mean, for the head of the committee.
Only the chairman has a two-year commitment. And he decides who he wants to serve on the committee.
Right.
So you'll get that, and I'd appreciate it if you give me your changes or your additions. That's all I have. Is there anything else?
Yeah, I do. On behalf of the employees that work for me, I told myself I was coming to the meeting tonight. Then wanted to thank Tanya personally for, you know, everything you've ever done for them. You've been a good boss. I know you and I have battled a few times, and we probably always will, but I was surprised my employees came to me and told me this morning, you know, to wish her goodbye. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Tanya, from all of us. I just mentioned that Tanya came, when I was elected to the board, Tanya was ahead of me about four months or five months, so we've been together since she's been here. So it's end of the meeting.